... seven, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible).
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it spans one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
(inaudible).
The first and second quarter fiscal year 2014 preliminary real estate and personal property tax bills were mailed together on June 28, 2013. Two separate invoices were mailed. The first quarter bill was due on August 1, 2013. The second quarter bill is due on November 1, 2013. When making your November 1, 2013 payment, please use the invoice labeled "Second Quarter Payment." If you're unable to locate your invoice, you can contact the collector's office at (567) 1066 or email at www.townhall@longmeadow.org and we will mail you a new invoice. The collector and assessor's office regular business hours are Monday through Thursday, 8:15 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and Friday, 8:15 to 12. You can pay your real estate tax and property, personal property tax in several ways, by person, mail, our convenient drop box located next to the front door of Town Hall, or online by going to the town's website, www-longmeadow.org, and under "Quick Links," click on "Pay Bills Online." Credit card payments can be made at the counter using either MasterCard or Discover. There is a fee. Thank you. Now, we'll move right along to visitor comments, and could you please state your name and where you live before you begin your comment? Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Jasmine, and I live at 123 Englewood Road. I'm here today to express my grave concerns for the intersection of Long Meadow Street, Converse Street, and Englewood Road. Saturday, a child was hit there, and this is a longstanding problem with this intersection. There are a lot of problems with it. The first of which, there are no crosslights for the kids. There's essentially a sign that says "Press for Green Light," but that "Press for Green Light" is the traffic light. So, kids and adults, any pedestrian is put into the crosswalk at the same time that traffic is told that they have a green light to go. This intersection also has lights that are not synchronized going north and southbound. That poses a problem for pedestrians and motorists. So, southbound has a light, a green light, that is longer than the northbound side of Route 5, and that's to keep the flow of traffic going from the highway. The problem is, one, there are no crossing lights. So, when the kids see the traffic stopped going northbound and they see that red light, they think it's okay to cross. What they're gonna find is they're in the middle of the intersection with cars coming straight at them. The other problem with the lights not being synchronized is that it is absolutely impossible to make a legal left-hand turn onto Englewood Road during high-traffic times. You just cannot do it. You have two lanes of traffic that are coming straight at you. You're not gonna get a break, and when you do get a break, when that traffic finally does stop, which is longer than the northbound Route 5 traffic, when it does stop, you're in the middle of traffic with the east and westbound traffic now coming at you. You just cannot make that left-hand turn. So, if you're unfamiliar with turning onto Englewood, try it during high-traffic times. You will not be able to do it, and you won't be able to do it legally, and if you make it, you're lucky. It's very difficult. So, this intersection is different from all the other intersections in town because it is high-traffic. It is a truck route. It's four, it's a four-way intersection, and it's fast, it's high-volume, and it's a truck route. It has no lights for the kids, and the kids, it's also a unique intersection because it leads to Williams Middle School, it leads to the high school, it leads to Bliss Park. And the kids are crossing over Long Meadow Street to get there, and there are no crossing signs for them to get there. They're also, it's a high-kid-volume area, and so they're meeting their friends on the other side, both sides are going back and forth, either ride to school, ride to the park, ride wherever, and there's no crosslight. So, it has a multitude of problems that need to be addressed.
Thank you very much, and you did send a written correspondence also.
I did.
So, thank you.
I have the lamentable task of being the note-taker tonight, so could you spell your name and repeat your address?
Okay. Stephanie, S.T.E.P.H.A.N.I.E., Jasmine, J.A.S.M.I.N., and it's 123 Englewood Road.
Thank you.
And I'll just add, I'm Ruth Griffiths from Englewood Road. We also have Pauline Craven and Melanie Rothstein, Rothstein. We wanted to make sure that this was viewed as not a neighbor or two, but this is the neighborhood. Everyone on Englewood Road is aware that you can't make that left turn. We know it's not safe, and I challenge anyone who doesn't think it's safe to put their loved one in a passenger seat and then try and make that left turn. You are absolutely putting their lives in danger to do it. We all know it can't be done. So, we, without thinking about it, go onto Warren Terrace, we cut through the back, we know that. When someone comes to visit, when other people come, when they MapQuest it, anything else happens, they try and take that left turn. That's a big problem. It's especially difficult for kids who are crossing from Converse or from one of those neighborhoods into our neighborhood because it's blind. The turns, the people who are going southbound and trying to do their left turns are out in the middle of the intersection. They're completely blocking the straight traffic, and I believe that is what happened to the boy who was hit. I believe that he had looked up and seen the red light, believed traffic should've stopped both directions, as I think would any of us have assumed that that was a normal thing, to look up and see that the red light indicated that traffic was stopping. But in fairness to that driver, the left-hand turn traffic does block any views of people who are crossing. So, it's just, we all know it's dangerous. We've all said to each other, we need to get something done about this. We've said it for years and years, and we, I just have to express that I'm embarrassed that it was until after a child was hit that finally we've kinda come together and, you know, are making that known. So, this really has been an ongoing thing, and I know that there's traffic issues and concerns throughout Long Meadow Street, especially, but this is a unique situation because of the lights, because it is onto Converse with the extra traffic going into East Long Meadow and the trucks, and because it does pose a, because it's especially deceptive, you know, the between the lights not in sync and the crossing walk that really isn't a crossing walk. It makes it seem like that would be an okay place to cross when it isn't. And we have, we've proposed a couple of things. One was syncing the lights. I know that that could lead to some other issues, but we do think that the lights need to be in sync. And two, crossing walks that actually have a cross box. Those are the two things that we think are the most important. If there were other solutions that had come up, then we could understand that there may be other solutions someone comes up with. One of them that I think I threw out was even a no-turn during certain hours left onto Englewood, so that people that aren't from the neighborhood know that that's not safe, although that doesn't address the lack of crosswalks or proper safe crossing. So, you know, we're not adamant that we have all the right answers, but we are adamant that something has to be done quickly.
Thank you. Did you wanna add something?
I've been there for seventeen years, and how many times have I ran that corner? My husband and I both in the medical profession. I have been plumping, pedestrian, you know, involved cars, and oftentimes it is the out-of-state plates because they don't understand that intersection. In the accident on Sunday, it was Connecticut plate, I can't find it, New Jersey, New York, it always seems to be someone, and we are familiar. I wouldn't turn there at midnight. I would never turn left. And another concern, I don't know how it could be addressed, the roads don't line up. So, they're mismatched, like, so you're coming up Englewood, Converse is over here. So, you've gotta kinda come out and jimmy people coming down Converse who want to turn left. They don't even really realize what you're doing because you're not matched up with them. So, the roads are all askew, it leaves a confusion. I can't go, I just trickle through the intersection because people turn left and almost hit them every time, and just the roads not lining up face-to-face either makes it difficult.
I'm gonna add one more thing, and that's that it's not just Englewood Road. Briar Cliff, Allen, all the neighborhoods behind there do come out and use Englewood Road as an exit place because of the light, and they often go in there as well. So, it's not just our street, it affects that whole back neighborhood.
Ma'am, could you give us her name?
Melanie, M.B.L.A.N.I.D., Rothstein, R.O.T.H., S.T.E.I.N.
And you're on Englewood Road as well?
Third, third Englewood, second from our corner, and I just said, you know, my kids are now in college, but it's still a sore spot for seventeen, eighteen years.
Yeah, and same thing. Pauline Craven, I live at 220 Long Meadow Street. So, I am just south of the Converse light. So, not only do I have the problem of trying to get back out of my driveway because the lights aren't syncing, which is a nightmare, but the biggest problem is I am actually witness. I watch these kids day in and day out try to cross. So, I am always out there yelling at kids, wait, so I see it all the time. So, it has been a really important issue that needs to be addressed before someone really gets hurt, so, thank you.
How do you spell your last name?
C.R.A.V.E.N.
And I understood a petition was put together and given to the town manager?
We did, and we just collected as many signatures as people were home in the one Sunday, you know, and everyone was coming to us. You know, it was very, very, very easy to collect the numbers we did. We also did a separate petition of kids who said they would like kids for safe crosswalks. So, that's a separate section.
Well, thank you very much for coming forward and stepping up for this serious problem. As I said, I had problems trying, when I first came in town, I tried to make that left and realized how serious it is. So, thank you very much for coming in. Stephen, did you wanna say anything or add?
Sure, thank you. I'm sure. I did receive the petition, and this morning, after we had discussed the incident at our department head meeting, the town has a traffic committee, which is the Director of Public Works, a town engineer, and the Chief of Police and myself. And we did discuss it, and I think as I spoke to you on the phone, it really is tied to a much larger issue regarding the signals on Long Meadow Street, and, you know, they've looked at, they've looked at, the traffic committee even before my tenure, looked at it many different times and tried to find ways to make it better. The fundamental issue is our signal equipment is outdated and really can't be modified in a way that's very effective, so it requires replacement, and it's an extremely expensive proposition. So, we are actually in the process of trying to find ways to really upgrade our signals and try and find, you know, try and coordinate the flow of traffic all through that stretch because your issue is tied to cut-throughs on South Park, and it really is tied to the Converse and Forest Glen traffic signals on Long Meadow Street, and to a lesser extent, probably Bliss Road. But that whole stretch during certain times is people are cutting through, trying to time the lights right, or cutting through, was it Warren, to avoid the Englewood light? I mean, it's, you create spillover effects when you make a single change, and so we're just trying to assess what the impacts are, how do, what changes do we need to make to the equipment, and what would that would cost? So, we are, like I said, it's not that nobody has paid attention to it, just as the tools we have to fix are very limited.
I would just say that in the years that we've been there, the, I have never once seen it attempted to have them in sync, and although, you know, I understand that there's spillover issues, those involve inconvenience much more than ours is very deceptively dangerous, and it's something that just should've been brought up a million times before. So, I would challenge you to try and do that, and then tell me that that's, try the, try the syncing the lights. I understand that maybe replacing in the cross, there's other things that take longer, but try putting them in sync and see what happens with the overflow before you decide that that is something that can't be done until later, rather than the other way around. I wouldn't wanna see the studies take months and something else happen in the meantime. I would say, try and put them so that they're timed and then see what happens, see how bad it is, because that becomes a traffic jam issue, whereas what we've got right now is a life-threatening issue.
We'll definitely put it on the agenda so the board will be able to review the issue and decide what the options are. I'll put it on for the next meeting.
And thank you for listening.
Well, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Thank you. Any other visitor comments?
Richard Elias, 608 Frank Smith Road, member of the Finance Committee. I was not gonna say anything tonight until I listened to the lady's comments, and I'm gonna start off with a positive. I noticed that last week, there was a vehicle out on Laurel Street, getting that big intersection there, counting traffic, which is great for the town. I hope they were our people that were doing it. But basically, if you go down past Laurel, in that little section before you hit the Forest Park, all the cars are coming down through the different streets and taking a left-hand turn on those streets.
Was yours? I'm sure the lock was.
No.
Was the key yours?
No. Yep. And they're coming out, they're crossing over, and for the people on those streets, that's gonna be miserable, all that traffic. What I would suggest is you might like to try putting on no left turn on opposite those streets, so it won't be a problem for those people. But the thing that bothers me the most is I'll be in that traffic, and a car, maybe two or three in the morning, will be going out into the other lane, going down to make a turn. I just want, as long as the subject was brought up, I thought I'd do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for interrupting when you're talking, Richard. I wanted to catch them before they left without their house keys, sorry.
That's okay. As long as I get the microphone, there's no problem.
I'd like to invite the, the attorney's in. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much. Before we get started, there's one aspect of the open meeting law that Brandon wants to address to the board.
Before you begin, could you say your name since Feldman, we have a new minute-taker.
Sure, I'm sorry. I'm Michael Lahane, and this is Brandon Moss, Attorney Brandon Moss.
So, in terms of, we're in open session, and one of the downsides of being in open session is that except for two limited instances, anything discussed in open session, any documents referred to or used in open session, or public documents, is subject to public disclosure. And the dot, the binders that we provided you tonight, there is some duplication, I think, with some stuff that you probably already had in your meeting packets from Friday. It was just, you know, some of this is more or less disorganizing, and so you have it in a binder. As we go through this process, you know, we can give you additional things we'll add to your binder, so you'll have something on this engagement. But Tab A is a confidential attorney-client privileged communication, and under the open, under the public records law, there is a recognized exemption or exception for attorney-client communications. However, where it's referred to or used at the meeting, there's that risk that it's lost. So, I would recommend and advise, you know, the board in terms of tonight discussing strategy in open session, that no members of the select board actually use the memorandum in Tab A. We can talk to you in terms of strategy, in terms of how we intend to approach this, but the actual document itself in Tab A, unless the board's inclined to waive the attorney-client privilege, which is for the board to decide, we would recommend not referring to that specific document, not using that particular document.
But the rest of the tabs are fine?
The rest of the tabs are not subject to, Tab A, and actually, I would, we would also say Tab B.
Okay.
Those two tabs. Tab B is a document that we created, that was created in terms of dealing with a possible agreement down the road. Tabs C, D, E, and F are not subject to any sort of exemption from withholding under the public records law, so they're fine to be used tonight.
Since we're talking about that topic specifically, I think one of the things that, since everything is now open session from my understanding, is how do we communicate something in the way of strategy? So, if Mark, Paul, Alex, and I have something that we want to tell you, we can't really send it, I mean, we can't do it in open session.
You have a five-member board, and so a quorum would be three. If the board can appoint or designate one member of the select board to be a liaison to dealing with our office, that'll avoid having to create a subcommittee. If one of those, if that one designee is contacted by any other members of the select board in terms of a question, a comment, concern, recommendation, you're only dealing with two, you're not creating a quorum. It's not a subcommittee, it's really just for purposes of facilitating any sort of issues with the open meeting law.
Because we have a subcommittee, but I was thinking if material is passed to the subcommittee, you would then become a quorum.
Yes, well, not only that, but, you know, the open meeting law applies to the subcommittee as well as it applies to the, to the entire board. So, it, you know, it is potentially a problem in terms of telegraphing any positions or decisions of the board to people that maybe would not necessarily be privy to them otherwise.
If we get far enough into the process in terms of arbitration, then we're gonna have litigation as a reason to go into executive session, but we haven't gotten to that point.
Sorry, can I ask a question? Do you mind just explaining why we're not able to conduct this session in open meeting? Again, I'm not trying to express skepticism, I'm just trying to understand, this, as a lawyer, this feels strange to me, and so if you could explain that to us.
It's a spirit of openness, and in fact, what's happened in terms of the open meeting law, and in fact, has become exponentially so in the last four years. The legislature completely redid the open meeting law to make it even harder to go into executive session. So, the only, any meeting, the default rule is any meeting is an open session unless, unless one of the ten reasons for executive session applies. In terms of those ten reasons, none of them would fit this circumstance. I've checked the Expanded Gaming Act, I've checked a couple of different exemptions, but nothing seems to fit this circumstance, which is very unfortunate because there's a possibility for, you know, hindering negotiations down the road. And MGM, all they have to do is watch the YouTube video from this, or watch it on cable access right now, and they're gonna know what we're talking about. So, unfortunately, it just doesn't fit. We thought that perhaps it was a possibility, the memorandum, that's an example in Tab A, could be a reason to go in because the public records law in some instances is actually recognized as a statute that allows you to go into executive session, but it's my understanding, the opinion of the Attorney General's Office, is that's not a good enough reason, that it's discretionary, it's not a mandatory document like a personnel record. For that reason, we can't just hitch ourselves onto the attorney-client privilege and then go into executive session that way, it's just the way the law is.
Yeah, I strongly suspect that in the next legislative session, there will be, you know, one or more proposals introduced to remedy this situation, you know, for the reason that it is obviously, has potentially great disadvantage to the town. You know, for Well-Areal, unfortunately, you know, it's, it's, it doesn't fall within one of the specified exemptions to the open meeting law, and so you're therefore, for the time being at least, stuck with doing it in open session.
But are we, again, this is a form of question, are we not discussing potential litigation strategy? I mean, and wouldn't that be a basis to go into executive session?
Well, you know, the Director of Open Government, you know, which is a function within the Attorney General's Office that polices the open meeting law, they, you know, they have taken the position that in order to fall within the litigation exemption, you virtually have to be on the courthouse steps with a complaint. And now, it would apply, of course, to the arbitration, but, you know, that's a stage of the process that's further down the road, we're not there yet.
I mean, it's comparable also to, for example, a zoning board of appeals will issue a decision on a permit, and if they deny the permit, there's a possibility, a likelihood of litigation regarding that, but until they've gotten to that point where they've denied it and they're in litigation, a zoning board can unveil itself of the litigation exemption. It's a similar situation with what we're dealing with here. We haven't gotten to the point with arbitration as an end result. I mean, right now, we're in the process of negotiating, but not, we're not actually in arbitration. One thought, additional thought, is the regulations themselves are quite comprehensive in terms of surrounding community requirements as well as other requirements. It may be something that's easier for the Gaming Commission to perhaps create an exemption A statute. Perhaps the Gaming Commission might be, might be in a position right now, because these things are now starting to come to the forefront right now for the Gaming Commission, perhaps to create an exemption, an exemption A stat, regulation.
Mark, Paul?
How is this different than negotiating with a union versus negotiating for a piece of land? I mean, because the strategy, Independence Day, is basically, is to try to establish a strategy, not for litigation, but for negotiation. So, why isn't that exempt under, or able to meet in executive session with that?
Well, because the negotiation with the union, or negotiation with respect to the acquisition or the potential acquisition of a piece of land are exceptions that are specifically set forth in the law. Now, you know, the same logic in your mind and my mind might apply, but for Well-Areal, you know, the development of positions with respect to negotiations as a surrounding community are not exceptions that are specifically set forth. So, that's the, that's the short answer. And of course, the, you know, for Well-Areal, the open meeting law provides that, you know, unless you fall squarely within an exception to the open meeting law, the presumption is that it'll be handled in open session.
If I can ask one more question, and I'm sure I know what the answer is. Does the gaming law allow us to view MGM's potential negotiating, negotiation strategy?
The public records law is something that, that should allow you to look at at least some of their documents. I think part of the problem is it's still a moving target, and there's a couple of things that are gonna exist to allow, I don't know if you're aware, but in the last week, there was a suitability determination for three of the applicants that included Mohegan Sun. There's gonna be one, and it's probably gonna happen on very short notice, I have to say, because of what happened with, with Mohegan Sun. It only happened with one to two weeks of notice. So, you're gonna get an idea on that, and I recommend either to have us or some, a member of the select board attend that suitability determination, even though it's just on financial qualifications, making sure that they're in a position that they can actually build and operate and mitigate, deal with all these issues. Definitely recommend that you attend, so you'll be able to get an idea. There also is the ability to do a public records request. Now, I would point out in terms of MGC, I actually have contacted, reached out to Catherine Blue, who's the general counsel for the Gaming Commission, have also reached out to John Zamba, the young budsmen for the Gaming Commission. I have not heard back, but I would like to take a look, rather than have him copy a luminous amount of documents, the majority of which we might not even need. MGC is just up the street, more or less from us in Quincy, it's just, you know, right in Boston, to actually go and look at their application, their phase one. So, some of that stuff is, there is an exemption for confidential documents within the gaming regulations. They do have special exemptions, but there are, there is probably a body of documents that they filed and submitted that is publicly accessible and available. So, that's, hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you.
All right. Why don't you go ahead with your presentation?
Well, we do think it's important, you know, there are a couple issues that have sort of pushed themselves to the forefront for the board's consideration. One of them is the engagement or potential engagement of a traffic consultant. You know, the, for Well-Areal, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission proposes, and it's alluded to in the letter that came it's alluded to in the letter that came today to Mr., Mr. Crane from MGM, and it specifically references a peer review, you know, which is a fairly limited type of analysis that is proposed to be done by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And I know that, I know that before we came in here this evening, there were citizens of the town who were present to, expressed to the board some concern about a motor vehicle accident with a bodily injury that happened in the recent past, and that's, I believe, at an intersection which has been addressed to some degree by the MGM studies, and which certainly would be part of an analysis that any traffic consultant that we would engage would, would certainly wanna look at, you know, perhaps in greater depth than has been the case already. And so, you know, our view is that, our view is that a peer review is not a sufficient means of determining whether or not there is potentially, you know, negative impacts on the town. So, that's, that's why, you know, our view is that the board should authorize the utilization of its own traffic consultant.
I believe the board authorized...
That authorization's already been made.
Yes, to any experts that our council feels necessary to move forward on.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, well, we would certainly, we would certainly want to utilize the traffic consultant. The other aspect that may become significant in terms of, in terms of the, the potential negative impacts, is the public safety aspect. And we know, for example, that if some of those intersections on the south end of town are backed up with traffic, it's gonna have a very negative impact on the ability of emergency medical personnel, or perhaps police vehicles or fire vehicles to, to respond to certain areas of the town. And I, we would, we would wanna have an expert take a look at that issue. It's a little bit aside from the, it's a, it's a little bit oblique to the studies that are usually done. You know, these types of studies very often are done in connection with sighting of a police or fire facility. And if we put it here, you know, what sort of access will we have to another area of town, you know, and we don't have exactly that situation in this instance, but it's certainly, the potential negative impact is, is significant.
In terms of, a couple of other things we wanted to make the board aware of, in terms of what we've been doing, what we expect to be doing. A letter, I understand, has been sent to MGM Springfield, in terms of trying to set up a preliminary meeting. Kinda gets a know-you type meeting in the sense that we have council involved, they have council. That's, that's something that, that we're looking to do in October, not a final meeting, but I think to, to kinda set some ground footing in terms of negotiations. Also, I understand the librarian is in the process of looking at some, the town librarian's looking at some potential comparative communities in Massachusetts. No?
Nationwide.
Nationwide, I'm sorry, I misspoke. For example, Toledo, Ohio, in the last year, give or take, Toledo's a mid-sized city on, on a river in Ohio, opened up the Hollywood Casino, so they're a fairly new comparable casino. Detroit has three, but Detroit, just by virtue of its size, is, there's a number of communities that border Detroit, but because of the size of Detroit, it, it's hard to, I think, make a true comparison. Some parts of Detroit, downtown Detroit are about twenty miles away. One thing, another thing I do wanna talk about, in terms of, right now, as of today, as of October seventh, there is no surrounding community agreement that's been finalized, negotiated, signed at all for any category one, or any category two license. And that's, that's significant, because category two are the slots parlors. Now, while you're not having them come to Western Massachusetts, they're kind of sending a signal in terms of how the gaming commission's gonna be approaching this. But that hasn't happened, and so, because that hadn't happened, as of last Thursday, the gaming commission actually extended the deadline till October thirty first for surrounding community agreements for the slots parlors to be, to either be signed or for there to be petitioning by communities in the applicant, that were left out of the applications, that were not designated. So, that's going on, and that was extended. And the slot parlors are, I think, a lot smaller scale than the resort casinos. So, one thing that I, that we might be looking to do is to notify the gaming commission, hey, look, if you've done this for the slots parlors, in terms of an extension of that deadline, it makes a lot of sense to do that with the resort casinos, particularly given the magnitude and scale of the resort casinos, such as the ones proposed in MGM Springfield, also because it's a moving target. Now, what's in Tab B, which we won't get into discussion of, to preserve the attorney-client privilege, is something to possibly address that issue in terms of reopening. But we, we're talking about possibly doing a letter, contacting the MGC to try to get an extension. Why is that significant? One of the reasons that the MGC, the gaming commission, used for extending that deadline, aside from the fact that there were no surrounding agreements, was the fact that they were actually contacted by a surrounding community to a slots parlor, and they viewed that as, as a reason to, among other reasons, to extend that deadline. So, I think it would be fair for them to, to look to possibly do a similar extension of a deadline.
Mark?
Yeah, Attorney Moss, why would we not do that? Why, why would we, wouldn't we just routinely send out a letter saying, look, it's October seventh, and they just, just recognized our, their ability to...
Yeah, it's very difficult to see a downside to doing that. So, you know, with, you know, if the boards, we don't necessarily wanna vote, but, you know, we would be representing to you that it is our intention to do that.
You're representing our best interest, go right ahead as far as I'm concerned.
We wanna make you aware too, before we send stuff out, on behalf of the town, this is what we're looking to do. And also because this is our first meeting with, with the board, since we've been retained in terms of what we, you know, how we're looking to approach all of this.
Just, I wanna just clarify, because I was a little confused reading the paper about this. The, uh, application phase two for the resort casinos is December thirty first. For the slot parlors, it was October thirty first?
It was October seventh.
October seventh, so they actually had already hit their deadline.
I'm sorry, October fourth, it was last Friday.
Okay, so that's why the extensions, so even though we're asking for it, we're asking for it a few months ahead of time. Okay, I wanted to make sure I understood those dates.
Now, there's a tab that's in your binder that's, that is public, a public document, which is the PVPC tab, which is Tab E. And that points out, you know, the, the scope of work, and that's a document that's dated September twenty seventh. And PVC, PVPC is potentially running on a similar track as to, you know, at least the limited traffic engineer, or traffic scope of work here. There's a possibility, you know, by the time PVPC gets its act together, you're gonna be running close to that December deadline. So, as a practical standpoint too, you know, if MGM is, is saying, we encourage and we recommend, and there was that letter that just came in today, go ahead with the PVPC, but that's not gonna be ready until close to December thirty first. I mean, it's just, it's not fair. It's not fair to the town, or any other surrounding community, that, that's the other five that are listed in that letter. It's not fair to, to get all that stuff done and then expect to have an agreement signed on dotted line within, you know, a matter of a couple of weeks. So, buying that additional time allows, you know, whatever needs to be done with the town zone, traffic engineer, as well as the PVPC traffic engineer, and any other possible impacts that are out there. You know, we, we, I think one thing that they came up and questioning a couple of weeks ago when we were here was this rifle versus buckshot approach. I mean, obviously, you're not gonna want to list every possible impact, because at some point, they start to compete with each other, and, you know, you wanna put the best foot forward in terms of it. So, you know, we're gonna wanna look at just a couple of these impacts, build a story on that in terms of also getting, getting a, you know, some of the mitigation from MGM for those, those issues. So, traffic's the obvious one, public safety, first responders is another obvious one. And I think, I mean, water and sewer, I think, is something that can be dealt with directly with the city of Springfield as much as they control, and we're happy to be part of that discussion, that's something we've flagged, but that's, and that's another one. I think those are gonna be the major impacts. There are questions as to amenities that might impact the town, but that's gonna be a judgment call, because I know there's the, the sentiment of, I think, within the town that the town doesn't want. You know, I think there are some folks, probably there's in the town who do not want this casino in Springfield, and so, there's that, there's a, a fine line involved with that.
Alex?
So, coming back to the extension question, the, I don't know if you guys have thought about this, but I have. It strikes me that if they extend the time for surrounding community agreements to be reached, and so that, let's say that goes beyond December thirty first, but the Mass Gaming Commission accepts their application, so our surrounding community agreement goes from being a condition precedent for the acceptance of the application, to sort of just another thing to do. And I was just wondering if you guys had thought about how that might impact our ability to get a fair agreement with MGM? Do you get what I'm getting, get what I'm saying?
We do, I mean, I think, really, the, it shouldn't, it, it shouldn't impact it. I mean, we're talking in theoretical terms, but it shouldn't impact it, and the reason why is Sections fifteen and Section seventeen of the Expanded Gaming Act include, among other requirements, for considering whether to issue the one Western Massachusetts license, surrounding community agreements. MGM has to have it. If they can't get it with, with Long Meadow, and I don't think with a straight face that anyone can say that Long Meadow's not a surrounding community, if they can't have it, then that, that's why there's that arbitration procedure as an absolute last resort to create that document. So, MGM has to have that document, whether it be negotiated amicably, or, or if it's decided by the arbitrator who picks generally the best and final offer of one of the two sides, it has to be done. There, they have to consider it, and I think not having it, and if MGM is, is negotiating in bad faith, just for purposes of this hypothetical, then I think that's something that, that needs to be, you know, that the gaming commission needs to be aware of. I mean, to the extent we have to send nasty grams, we have to send letters to MGM, hey, this is what needs to be done, and this hasn't been done, then we will be copying the gaming commission to make them aware all along in the process. But that is something that has to be, that they have to have as part of this license application. And if they don't, and there's a Palmer casino, I think that's a consideration.
But I, I think we've gotten some word back that they would be willing to accept an application where negotiations are, you know, taking place. And I guess what I'm just kind of thinking, it's one thing to, you know, for MGM to be thinking, well, I've, we've got to get all these agreements in before they're leaving and accept our application, as opposed to, they've accepted our application, we know we're in the running for the April decision...
Right.
And, you know, we'll work something out with the surrounding commu... Do you get what I'm saying?
They can file the application, because three slot parlors filed them last Fri... last Friday...
Yeah.
...without having any agreements. It's whether or not what happens to the license actually being granted by the gaming commission.
See, it's, I think it's fairly clear that the gaming commission is not going to issue any licenses unless the surrounding community agreements are in place. And, you know, that could be as a result of agreement between the parties, or it could be as a result of, of an arbitration process. The, you know, it's, it's, it's a tremendously strong incentive, I think, for MGM or any applicant to treat with the surrounding communities in a fair and reasonable way. You know, for these people especially, time is money, time is money. They wanna get, they wanna get the shovels in the ground, and they wanna eventually, you know, their, their ultimate goal, of course, is to open the doors so that people can stream through the doors with their fifty dollar and hundred dollar bills. And, you know, what they do not want, or one of the things that they do not want, is a license held up, you know, because they haven't either engaged in the process, or haven't successfully engaged in the process.
Can I, Alex, I mean, I think, because of the question I heard, is, I think what I, and correct me if I'm wrong, we need to understand, there is gonna be a casino in Western Massachusetts, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah, I mean, the statute says may issue, but they're gonna issue one.
Yeah, there will be a casino in Western Massachusetts, yes.
So, the issue is MGM, i- if it's just MGM and it's not Palmer, even if it is, to the benefit of MGM to negotiate with us, with or, to negotiate or not negotiate, really isn't the issue, it's how much money they wanna, they wanna give to the town of Long Meadow, regardless of what we're gonna put in front of them.
Exactly.
Okay. So, we know that going in, they're gonna say, no, it's ten thousand dollars a year, or whatever it is, and, you know, we're gonna say, no, it's eight million dollars a year. So, the reality is, it's, it's gonna be, in my opinion, from what I'm seeing, just from the unresponsiveness, or I should say, I would expect that they would've been at our front door when the, when the issue passed in Springfield, for their benefit, like you said, time is money. But the reality is, is that this is really just prepping it for the arbitration, because unless it's something that they see eye to eye with Long Meadow on, that it's just, it's gonna go to arbitration, that's the, it seems like the reality. Because if the slot parlors follow, file their applications without surrounding community agreements, then there really is no incentive for MGM to settle ahead of time, so to speak. They're gonna settle anyway through arbitration, as, as, as a worst-case scenario.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a, it's, it shows something to the gaming commission for what it's worth, in terms of, hey, we were, we're gonna be a good neighbor, we've worked it out with all these folks, but at the end of the day, I mean, you know, if, if Palmer is a competitor, and both casinos don't have all of the surrounding agreements done, I mean, we're talking, I think, eighty to a hundred or so surrounding communities statewide with all the licenses. If they don't have it, I mean, it's just gonna be, they're both, both, both casinos would be in the same, you know, posture. I mean, the other thing too, is one reason why they may be somewhat hesitant to execute a surrounding agreement and not have all of them, is that the surrounding agreements are actually admissible as evidence, and there's pros and cons to this, both in terms of MGM having to go to arbitration with the surrounding communities, and with Palmer going, because they can actually use surrounding agreements as evidence in arbitration.
I think it's very unlikely, but it is certainly possible, it's within the realm of possibility, that MGM may have said, hey, we're just gonna dig our feet in on this thing and, and do nothing, and let somebody jam something down our throat. You know, I think, for the reasons that Brandon stated, I think that's highly unlikely. But, you know, we'll have a better idea, we'll have a better idea after we meet with them.
The other thing I also wanna mention in terms of what we're doing and planning to do, is, is contacting, another one of the tabs you have, again, is a public document, and actually came from the city of Springfield's website, is Tab C, which is the exhibit that, the portion that deals with the surrounding agreements for MGM, that they came up with this five hundred thousand dollar number in isolation. It's our position that that's not, you know, that's not, and that was asked, so I say this is public information, I mean, I was talking to you tonight, we were asked about this a couple of weeks ago, and it's our position that that's not, that's not binding on the town of Long Meadow, and so, we're gonna be trying to obtain something from the gaming commission to support that as well.
Are there surrounding agreements that MGM has done with other, in other states?
Not as far as I'm aware, and the reason why is because this requirement for surrounding agreement is only required in Massachusetts, so they wouldn't want it, they wouldn't have to do it in another state like Ohio.
But there are payments that are made to surrounding communities, and there must be some sort of agreements that those are based on. Because it's, though the surrounding community agreement, I know, is only in this legislation. My understanding from calling around is that there are some sort of agreements that are out there for mitigation. And are those available to research and see what MGM has done?
Well, if you, if you know that specific communities have surrounding community agreements, that would be very helpful to us, if you would tell us what the, those communities are. I don't mean necessarily right at this moment, but in, in all likelihood, those documents are public records. Nearly every state has a so-called sunshine law, and the, the great likelihood is that we would be able to acquire copies of those documents. You're right, I mean, it's, I think it's fairly obvious that whatever agreements may exist have to be in writing. And, you know, neither MGM nor any other business entity is gonna be making payments based on a handshake, or goodwill, or anything of that nature.
That's certainly something we, Karen Kepman, library directors, agreed to help, using the research tools at the library at her disposal, to research comparable communities and casino facilities, and we could certainly add that to the list of, her assignment is essentially finds, you know, ten casinos that are comparable, there are five thousand in the country. If you control for Nevada, Atlantic City, you know, places that really aren't comparable, and then take out cities of a certain size, you could probably drill down into that list. But I asked her to try and find a few that fit, and then find some of the surrounding communities and some points of contact, that's essentially the assignment. And she's working on that this week. And she's working on that this week. And once we have that information, certainly we intend, we intend to reach out to those communities to ask questions very much like the one you're asking.
I mean, it certainly would be within MGM's interests, other casino operators' interests, to the extent that they have surrounding communities, and there might be issues like roadway infrastructure, because if someone can't get to a casino, then that actually does impact the casino. If they have to go through another town, I mean, it happens all the time. No one wants to go near Rentham Village Outlets around Black Friday because the roads are a mess. It's the same type of draw process in terms of, you know, behooves MGM or other casino operators, even though not required, to try to make their casinos accessible. Whether it spills into other issues that the regulations here in Massachusetts deal with, that's another, another matter. But I think, I think it's fair to assume that there's agreements out there that they would touch on traffic and infrastructure issues.
Can I add a question about process? You have, and the last time we spoke to you, you said that this is the month for due diligence, that you were going to be working on that. And now you talked about two experts. One was traffic and the other was public safety.
Yes.
That you were going to pursue, the board agreed and we had passed that vote. So are you expecting, is the process going to be the town manager and council getting them on board this month, or what? Do you have plans in regards to the experts?
Well, we certainly hope that within a couple of weeks, we will have identified the service providers in those particular areas. And, you know, there was a third area that Brandon was in touch with, a professor from UMass Dartmouth. And so we would, we would certainly expect that within two weeks, we will have that nailed down and have a letter agreement with the particular individuals involved.
You do have one of the three possible experts, which is Tab F, to this binder, which is a fellow with Parsons Brinkerhoff.
It's also in your packets.
Yep. So.
Yeah, we had a conference call with them last week, and I think, I don't know, I speak for you, Brandon, but I think we're comfortable with their approach, their familiarity with processes like this. It is a task-based approach, meaning we bring them, bring them in for the tasks that we feel we need them for, for the specific things. You know, we have the request from MGM from the letter tonight suggesting that their obligation to help surrounding communities assess traffic is through their work with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, as well as giving surrounding communities the opportunity, a week or so ago, to go to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and work directly with MGM's traffic consultant on identifying additional intersections that needed study to add our concerns to the baseline study that would be subject to PVPC's peer review. As you can see from the letter, several communities have already agreed with this approach. Several of the communities around us have agreed with this approach. I'd like some guidance from the select board on that. It's, I don't, we're not bound to not do our own work if we agree, if we agree. It just is a matter of dispersment for the costs of the expert, I think is what the letter is essentially saying. But I do think that we are, we are ready to go when an assignment is ready. We are ready to go with Parsons. I think, we believe that, I mean, they have an office in Glastonbury, Connecticut as well, with traffic engineers. And so they are not working for any, any other town or any other developer on this casino issue, so they would be working just for the town of Long Meadow. And so we're, like I said, we are, we have one consultant identified. In terms of the public safety, I would say that, as I mentioned in the past meetings, Chief Eric Madison for the Fire Department, Chief Robert Sienoff for the Police Department, have been reaching out to their colleagues in Connecticut around both Foxwoods and Mohegan Sun, to some extent with limited effectiveness, because in the case of the Fire Department, there are volunteer fire departments down there, so you don't have anybody full-time. And the information is to some extent anecdotal. For police work, a lot of it is patrolled by the State Patrol in Connecticut. And so the chief did hear back from someone from the State Police in Connecticut, didn't really give us a lot of information on, other than, yes, certain things go up. So that will take, I think, some additional work. I think we did discuss that with Parsons as well, and they have some ability to add that component to their study. So I think we are covered on that as well. In terms of water and sewers, you know, just to clarify, it's the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, not the City of Springfield. And we have, our, our, our division head for water has reached out to his colleague, he's the person that works most closely in the town with the commission, and he has reached out, I think, several times in an attempt to schedule a meeting for us to go sit with them and talk about, you know, their analysis shows that it's not going to have an impact on water and sewer rates, or on capacity, or I shouldn't say it's an impact on capacity, that they have the capacity to absorb the development and they have a commitment from MGM to pay for any upgrades needed for the development. We want to sit with them and ask some additional follow-through questions like, well, what about the next project that isn't compelled to pay mitigation? And how did you arrive at that analysis? And to some extent, they have limited information because the project has not been designed. I mean, they have conceptual designs and the kind of computer-generated 3D modeling, but that isn't, that doesn't tie how many fixtures, how many toilets, how many showers. I mean, it's, you need a lot more details than exists today to get to that answer. But that is something that we've been really pressing the commission to meet with us on, and, you know, we will, we'll try again, and this time perhaps send a letter from me to the Chair of the Commission.
Mark?
I guess I have a question about one of these areas of expertise, and that's traffic, because it continues to come up here. And I read the Parsons Brinkerhoff proposal or capabilities, but I still ask from our, from, you know, legal representation, what is it we expect to get as a deliverable from our traffic engineer, different from somebody looking at existing data and making a different analysis of the existing data? Future data is totally speculative. And so how do you see a traffic study being different from somebody else who call, you can call it, and they do call it, a peer review, as opposed to an independent view of the existing data?
Well, I think with the proposed scope of work, it's limited upfront with the potential for it being full. We don't want redundancy, and that's something I think we were trying to avoid in terms of just having a redundant, three potential redundant traffic studies, both in terms of the TEC, sort of the PVPC, in terms of Parsons Brinkerhoff. So I think what we're trying to do is where there's gaps, we might have to have independent investigation, or as to areas that there might be a gap that was not addressed by one of the other studies. Because it's, it's hard to put all your eggs in one basket when dealing with this, and there is that risk of gaps. I mean, but there's that, that balance that you don't want to have three studies saying the exact same thing, and then also having MGM say, we're not paying for your study, by the way.
Yeah, I could ask, Mark?
Yeah.
And I think that the timeline for the PVPC study, I would say, is not, they're looking at end of October, early November. I know they, they should have somebody either on board or about to sign a contract. They didn't go through their procurement. I think that process is concluded. But the, to some extent, and the TEC MGM study isn't completely done either. So, you know, the review means you take the existing product and review it. And so our Pioneer, or Parsons Brinkerhoff really won't get started in earnest until some of the, until the traffic study, at least for TEC to start, is completed. And certainly, we can retain them to be doing, in fact, the proposal we have is essentially to do the kind of initial peer review, which is similar to what Pioneer Valley would be doing. And that can happen concurrently with Pioneer Valley's review. We asked them that exact same question, Mark, on our call, why shouldn't we do our own? And they.
We asked who? We asked.
Parsons Brinkerhoff.
Okay.
Right?
Right.
And, I mean, as Brandon said, the answer is, you know, it's redundancy, it can create some confusion, it can hinder the process instead of helping along. And that is somewhat, I don't know about all the other engineering fields, but I know in the case of traffic, this is the way it is, is always done, for all the ones I've been a part of, this is how they do it.
And, you know, can I ask a question?
But, Mark, you finished.
If I could just kind of follow up. So Steve, my question was intended to get toward, you know, why wouldn't we peer review existing traffic data? And you're saying that's what Parsons Brinkerhoff said, is that it would get redundant to do your own studies? Is that not what you just said?
You just said, review existing data. I thought you, reviewing existing data is a peer review. If you're talking about a full collection of additional data and additional traffic, and that may be a part of what we end up doing. But to start it now, and we have done, those were our, our guys doing those traffic counts. We've been collecting some of our own data to make it, to refresh it essentially, like during the Big E. And so we have been, you know, collecting some additional data, but it's, I think what they said was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brandon, but it's, and you said this before, Mark, having everybody start with the same baseline information is important to deciding, to analyzing what the projected impacts could be, because that's all it is, as we've said before, it's just a projection. And so making a projection based on different data, if Parsons Brinkerhoff has one set of data and they're projecting trip generation modeling based on their data, and TEC and Pioneer Valley have their own, and we go to arbitration, it doesn't really help our case. That's what I thought Parsons said about, I'll throw it to you, Brandon, for your feedback.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going to get more mitigations if we demonstrate that the data from PVPC or TEC is insufficient, that it's actually going to be worse, that there's going to be more trips, the trip count's going to be higher, things along those lines. But we don't have anything to go off of right now. And I think the important thing, it was asked during that, that conference call, you know, getting into November, which is when PVPC and TEC should be done, is that going to give Parsons enough time if they need to actually independently do their own? And I think, you know, what they said was absolutely, they can do it. They can meet timelines. So we're not getting too close to the eleventh hour. Parsons Brinkerhoff can do independent study if they need to. And, but they're reserved and they're right, because we're, we're, we don't want to put the, you know, the card ahead of the horse.
But essentially, what we're saying is, the proposal from Parsons Brinkerhoff that is, is to utilize the same data and analyze it with, with an eye toward Long Meadow's particular issues. Is that correct or not?
The vast majority of the work is that. The other part of the work is reviewing their data collection methodology, identifying gaps in their data. And I see data collection, it's car, it's counting cars in turns and things like that. We know we, because sometimes we talk about data, and we're talking about projected data. That's a separate question. We're talking about underlying existing condition, no build data on how many cars pass our roads and turn at certain intersections today. And so that is, if they feel like the collection of that information was flawed or didn't cover intersections that we feel need to be covered, they are ready to go out and get that information very, on very short notice. But they need to see the reports and where the data was collected before they can do that. They don't see value in going out and doing it right now without getting the baseline information from TEC and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. The second part of that, Mark, is then taking the projections of full build data and saying, which are all based on, you know, industry standard models of, if you have a hotel with this many rooms, if you have this many gaming, you know, positions, there's X number of cars per day, et cetera, et cetera. They have all the same modeling, access to the same modeling that TEC and Pioneer Valley have. They may just say, well, you're not accounting for this factor that's unique to Long Meadow or that factor. I think I mentioned trips through Long Meadow, or trips to the casino from East Long Meadow. TEC MGM's consultant may be saying they're going to get on Dickinson. We may say, you know, people from East Long Meadow drive through, you know, Converse and Forest Glen, and they cut through town, they'll go that way. And that's something that's unique to Long Meadow that we can counter. Until we see their trip distribution model, we can't really react to that. Like I said, I think the directive that we received was find someone who can analyze the traffic impacts on the, of the casino on Long Meadow. And I think we have every confidence that Parsons is the right firm to do that for us.
They dealt with, by way of background, Gillette Stadium, Foxborough, and also both the stadium and the retail components of that. So they do have experience dealing with these large-scale projects.
Working for the town of Foxborough.
Yes.
Alex?
I have a few questions. The question of what intersections are being studied right now?
And I understand they're not done.
How come we don't know that right now? I mean, one of the concerns I have is that, and I think you guys have both talked about it, is we want to be sure that we're studying all the intersections that we think are appropriate. And, and then, why don't we know that right now? I mean, and then we can decide, well, if that data isn't being collected, then we can go look at it. That's question number one. So question number two is, the concern that I have is, what if Parsons Brinkerhoff goes and finds gaps, as you say? We need to go collect more data. So they go look at, you know, November twentieth through December one or something like that, those traffic counts. And MGM counters and says, well, that's, oh, well, good that you looked at that data, but that's not a very relevant time period. It's not as persuasive as the time periods that we looked at, and we're going to be, you know, discounting the value of that information. So that's number two. Then the third question is, I didn't quite understand the point about it being important that everybody have the same data. Because oftentimes, the way that you counter the opposing side's expert is to say that they didn't look at all the right data, or they didn't consider the right thing. In fact, it's sort of unusual for experts to always look at exactly the same thing. So I don't know. Those were the sort of three quick questions, and then I'll throw one fourth one in, because I had asked.
Bonus round?
Yes. Because I had, because I had asked you about this a little while ago, and I think you said you were going to do your presentation. I wanted to know what a limited scope traffic study was.
Okay. Can I, can I respond?
Okay, you can remember all four.
Okay, so first question.
And do I take notes now for you?
I should have written them down. First question was with regard to.
What streets?
What streets?
What intersection?
We know by virtue of the scope of work that they have to perform for the MEPA study, the state study, we know the defined intersections in that report, and that includes Forest Glen and Converse Street in Long Meadow.
And Long Meadow Street.
Well, Long Meadow and Forest, the intersections of Long Meadow Street with Forest Glen and Long Meadow and Converse, and as you recall, I, Converse wasn't originally in, and I asked them earlier on this year to put it in, and they did voluntarily. They weren't required by the state to do that. When we met with them at Pioneer, Brandon was not here for this part, but when the town engineer and I went to Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, when they assembled all the surrounding communities to go over their traffic study, they had boards of each community on easels. And Yem and I went over and circled four or five other intersections that we felt were also important, it's really all the primary gateway intersections into and out of Long Meadow, and said, we want you to add these to your study. They said at the meeting they would, I have asked, I've requested that in writing from them, that they are going to commit to doing those intersections. So.
And we're still waiting for that?
For the, yeah, I mean, that was early last week, maybe the end of the week before. So they, so there's that part. So he answers, yes, we know the intersections that are being studied, we know the ones that aren't, and we've asked to have the ones we believe need to be studied added to the scope.
Okay, of MGM's.
Of MGM's traffic, traffic study. And Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is going to peer review the final study. And so if it's in MGM study, well, I shouldn't say I know this for sure, but if you read Pioneer Valley's scope of work, it's somewhat vague, and it's vague because they're reacting to MGM's study as well. So we talk, so that would lead into question number two about expert data collection.
Right.
When you talk about collecting the same data, it's, certain inputs go into a traffic study, like I said, turning movements, trucks, pedestrians, things like that. And so when you talk about different sets of data, I mean, you could say, and in terms of one weekend versus the other, it's just a snapshot. They pick a weekend that they happen to be out this way and they put down the counters. Now, when we did our data, we picked ours purposely, the weekend of the Big E, because we want to show what traffic will look like on that weekend. But the way, I think the suggestion, if I play out that string a little bit, it's, did they not count all the cars turning right that day for whatever reason? And it doesn't really happen that way. They just go out and, they usually have, you know, traffic counters, like subs, go out and just count. But when you say the same set of data really is intersections, streets, things like that, and it is just a snapshot of a particular time, so one is not going to be more compelling than the other, unless it is a special event, you know, or something like that. And that may be something we fight about later in arbitration. But generally speaking, I don't think that, it's not like they picked a weekend that they felt would be low and then, you know, went with that.
Plus you have the data from Big E.
Plus you have the data from Big E, and existing traffic data that's been around for, you know, and people have collected lots of traffic data in this area. So that was two. What was three? So that was two. What was three?
The, why did we think it was, I guess I didn't quite get why it was important to have the same data for the experts? And I don't know, do you guys agree with that?
Well, you may not have the same data. I mean, I think the starting point is to find out what data they have once they complete the study, and then to the extent that our, the Parsons finds gaps or issues or problems, it's a matter of addressing that. So if we do have to go to arbitration, we're not stuck with something we never did, that we didn't commission, we're not relying on someone else. Because you have to remember, it's a regional study, so they may not have that point of emphasis within each of the seven communities. Five have signed on, you know, they want Long Meadow on as number six, there's a number seven. Keep in mind, the other thing too with PVPC, they're not just dealing with the traffic study for MGM. They're also doing the traffic study with Mahogany, Sun and Palmer. So, I mean, at some point, resources and efforts can get stretched thin on a regional approach and also, you know, on the, above that. So you just want to be able to have that ability to have someone for Long Meadow. Because Long Meadow is going to, wants the mitigation. It's, you know, it's, to a point, there's, it's great to have a regional approach, but to a point, you also want to have your own person. And that's why we discussed having limited with the potential within these tight timeframes to go to a full traffic study as an absolute worst-case situation.
And then, I guess the final thing, which I guess you've been promising, is what is this limited scope traffic study? I think you made reference to it, Mr. Moss. You said it was limited scope with the possibility of full.
Yes. So it's limited at this point in terms of reviewing what is provided and prepared by TEC. And it's in the package that Stephen had provided, it's the same thing, that's in RTAFF. It's, I think you should have the same document twice. But basically, it's reviewing what was submitted, but to the extent they identify something and something needs to actually be done or needs to be redone, that's where it becomes more of a full, more of a full scope or independent scope.
Okay, so limited means reviewing TEC studies?
Yes.
All existing information. Reviewing all existing information.
All right. And so a full study would be filling in the gaps, as you said.
After we just say, this is the preliminary, the study that TEC did back late last year for the kind of, you know, and some of these numbers have been quoted, but I think even now, TEC would tell you that their modeling and data collection has advanced beyond this study. But this is a traffic study. So, I mean, and having to say, having this get dropped on us, you know, November 15th isn't going to, you know, do us much good. We want someone who can kind of cull this data down and give us the important parts of the analysis. So knowing, I guess another way of saying it is, having our expert be able to tell us what's missing from here is more important to us than having our expert go out and count all this data all over again.
Paul?
Thank you. I'm a little confused, because I thought about a month ago, we had a discussion, and we were told that all traffic studies are based on the same information, that a car is a car, and the only discrepancy would be, is it a secondary road, a tertiary road, and so forth? And that, and I thought the purpose of us voting or coming to a consensus with the traffic study was that we wanted to find our best interests, make sure that our best interests are taken care of. So we're going to have a study done that's performed by MGM's consultant that's going to be peer reviewed by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, which will then be peer reviewed by Parsons Brinkerhoff. And if Parsons Brinkerhoff doesn't believe that it's the right study, then we're going to wait another 30 to 45 days for them to conduct theirs. So going timeline-wise, we now expect, because we were told, I think when Mr. Brennan was here, that that study that was going to be done by TEC wasn't going to be done until just about the time we had to submit our surrounding community agreement. So now, it seems like it's been pushed up a month.
If, there gets to be a point where it seems like we're getting close to the end, assuming the deadline's not moved back, because it hasn't been. But assuming the deadline hasn't been moved back, and we're getting to a, the doors becomes a cutoff point, we haven't received it, we're just going to pull the trigger and do it ourselves. We have that option, that ability to do that.
Okay, that's not the question I'm asking. The first part of it is, enough to you guys, is that I thought traffic studies were traffic studies.
I'm not sure what I've said differently than that.
Okay, so if a traffic study is a traffic study, but we're basically going to hire a firm to do a peer review of a peer review. To begin with.
To begin, not necessarily.
But that's what I thought you just said, that they're going to do a peer review of PVPC's report.
No, I think we said that if we just, that they are prepared to do a peer review of TEC's report that could go concurrently with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's report. And then we could have them as an additional task, peer review PVPC study. I mean, it's really, that scope you have in front of you with the quotes is to review TEC's work.
Okay. So I just want to follow up, that I thought that's exactly what we didn't want, was a peer review of the traffic study, that we were looking for our own expert to come in and figure out what's what. But on the second part of that, my question is, why would we hire a traffic study firm to conduct a public safety background for us? I can't imagine that engineer firm that deals in traffic studies also has the capabilities to tell us how many more DUIs come up in a casino and how many more arrests and so forth. Why wouldn't we be looking for a separate company to deal specifically with public safety, whether it's police and fire, as opposed to a traffic study firm?
We actually have a consultant that was, was one of the clients that we have on the Cape that deals with public safety, someone in Northampton, who can separately deal with that issue of the public safety impact.
Okay, so then I must heard that we were also going to entertain Parsons Brinkerhoff for public safety.
Well, I think Mr. Crane said that they have some expertise in that area. You know, to some extent, you know, the issue of, well, will we have our own traffic expert or will we rely on PVPC or tech or whoever? You know, to some extent, it's a question of, or it's similar in some ways to, well, shall we, we know we have a rash, should we go on WebMD or should we go to our own doctor? You know, I mean, we know that presumably our own doctor is going to, is going to have our best interests at heart, and is going to be able to deal with our concerns in a more comprehensive way than WebMD can or than PVPC can or than tech can. You know, we know that tech is looking at trying to make things as compatible for their client, MGM Grand, as they can. And we want to make, you know, we want to satisfy ourselves that whatever they have done has been done in a way that is consistent with industry standards and is consistent with objective realities and so forth. So that's, you know, that's what a peer review is all about. Now, it may be that, it may be that as a result of that peer review, Parsons may say, well, you know, we think that they should have done something a little differently or that they should have considered this element, you know. That's, those are the, you know, that's what makes, as they say, harsh racism law cases. Is, you know, what importance do you put on a particular issue?
But in the scope of work for TEC with MGM, don't we know what they're going to look at? Isn't that, isn't that public information, a document that?
Yes, yes it is.
So if we have that information in our hand that says, here's what they're going to look at, and we have a traffic study firm, Parsons Brinkerhoff, that says, that can look at that and say, look, they're not looking at what you need to look at for Long Meadow. Why are we waiting for them to actually complete the report if we already know what they're going to look at? Or if we will know what they're going to look at?
Because we need to see the report. It's like, to stick with Mike's doctor analogy, if you go for a second opinion, the next doctor's going to take the testing and diagnosis that's already been done and review that and see if that fits with his understanding and do additional testing as necessary and go from there. It's, we know what they're looking at, we don't know how they are going to create their models, their distribution things, I mean, it's, there is some science to it, and we don't know what... We have, I shouldn't say don't know, like we don't, like it's going to be surprising to us. We're pretty, we're pretty sure we, their program, their building program is established to like a certain number of thousands of square feet. You see the Pioneer Valley Planning scope that was in the packet, under that letter from Tim? The scope of work talks a lot about square footage. The reason why it does that is because the modeling that takes place in these traffic studies is based on, you know, based on number of square foot, you're going to generate X number of cars, and that's how they approach these things. And so Parsons' job would be to analyze the building program. Is it what they said? Is there going to be, you know, TEC may claim a certain efficiency of trips where they're going to count some, they're going to count, if a hotel and a casino each generate 1.5 car trips per measuring unit, they may combine some of those, because someone's going to stay and play. And we may say, well, no, you're not really going to get that kind of traffic. We think those counts should be pulled out. It's, it's that kind of nitty-gritty analysis that, that's what the engineers do. So we don't, they presented at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, there are numbers that they think they're going to get. But we, like I said, we all asked them to do additional work.
But I still think I'm, I'm just puzzled, because we, and I understand, I'll use the doctor analogy. Doctor, you know, you say, I got a rash, and, you know, it's on part of your skin, so I'll go look at a WebMD. But if your body's covered in a rash, you might want to go to the emergency room rather than even call your own doctor. So I understand the analogy and I get it, and you can go look up a lot of that information on your own. But are we comfortable, and that's my question for the board, is, are you comfortable with the fox in the hen house? You have a traffic study that's going to be conducted by MGM. On one hand, we're told that traffic studies are traffic studies, the baseline data is always the same type of thing. So are we comfortable in waiting? Because it was supposed to be a December deadline, more or less, with the TEC report. Are we comfortable waiting to say, wait a minute? We don't even know, you know, go, now go look at it, it's been completed, whenever that is. And then come back to us and tell us what we have to then go back to them with and say, we don't like it. That's, and I thought that the whole conversation we had about going out and getting someone was with the anticipation that we weren't going to just really take part of MGM's or that was going to be evidence that we were going to have. I don't, I guess I'm on a different understanding of what we did, why we did it.
Do you want to address that, the coordination between Pioneer Valley Planning, TEC, and when Brickman should be coming in? And do we need to worry about them getting in the counts earlier rather than later?
If you, I mean, if you, if the board wants to have Parsons do a full-fledged report right now, I mean, nothing, the downside is really just a downside of cost. And you have a not-to-exceed fee of, I think it was $50,000. That's, that's the big downside.
Well, do we even know that MGM would pay for it if they feel Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is covering it, you're saying?
They're probably going to put up some level of fight because of the letter that came in today saying, get on board with the regional one, which, we're not telling you to get on board with the regional one and only rely on the regional one. I think that's not an issue. That's going to be the big downside. It's an expenditure of cost, and it's a big unknown right now in terms of what the mitigation's going to be, because we don't have the results of, hey, look, we need this amount of money, because these traffic lights have to be synchronized, have to be replaced. We have to have lanes, we have to possibly add an officer to direct traffic during these hours. We don't know that yet, because we're, this is what we're talking about, is getting to that point. I say that because you don't want to spend $50,000 on a study with the possibility, you may not want to spend $50,000 on a traffic study, the possibility that the mitigation for traffic perhaps might be $20,000. And then it's like, well, why don't we just spend $50,000? That's what we're trying to avoid getting to. But, so that's the risk, not being reimbursed and, you know, being out the cost. But it's an unknown, and it's hard to give you a direct answer. I'm not trying to give you the attorney's answer or give you no answer. But that's, that's kind of the dynamic, there's pros and cons. Nothing prevents it, but that, the downside's going to be the cost right now upfront.
Just, just on the timing issue, what we heard from Tim Brennan, this before y'all came on board, was the TEC study would not be completed till the first half of December.
Or that was the MEPA study.
That was the MEPA.
That's different. I think the traffic study was November. No, MEPA was December.
I use the chapter in the book analogy. The MEPA study is a book.
Yeah.
The traffic study is one component, one chapter. And the chapter is 90% done, and they've shared excerpts from it with surrounding communities as best they have it. And so that type of work can be analyzed. Now, I don't have the updated version of this from TEC, but they've been talking to our town engineer, you know, they've been talking, like, so as soon as PVPC's person comes on board, they'll probably have access to a lot of data. But, so that, the work on traffic study peer view of TEC's work, that'll begin as soon as PVPC signs a contract or we give Parsons Brinkerhoff a notice to proceed.
So I guess, I guess maybe that's just my, bottom line question is, what's the timeline for Parsons Brinkerhoff? If the idea is to do a limited, and then having done that, decide whether a full study is... I mean, could you just lay that out for us? Because I must say, we as a board have been posing this question for months and have yet to hear a timeline on it. And I'm sure you guys have thought about all that, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think the reality is that October is the month for getting something. And if not, then I think November is the month for doing it ourselves. I think that's, that's the timeline.
So when do we think Parsons Brinkerhoff can do its review of MGM's study? When do we think that's going to happen? And when are we going to be able to be at that point where we decide? When are we going to be at the point where we're going to be able to say, we need to do a full study or not?
Well, you know, the other thing too, in terms of dealing with this, is look, we say to you, I mean, we say to MGM, look, we need your stuff now. And if we don't have your stuff now, we're going to have to get it ourselves, and we're going to ask you to pay for it. And if you don't pay for it, we're going to the MGC to have them pay, get it paid for. Because at some point, you know, we can't be waiting till the 11th hour and then all of a sudden have it dumped and then have these issues of possibly having our, you know, our study compromised because of that.
But doesn't it happen once we join the community effort there, the regional effort from PVPC? Because you're adhering to their study?
No, I think the response to that, that letter is saying, we're reserving our right, we're willing to be involved to a point where we're also having, you know, we're having work done on our own ends. But I think there is going to be, so I don't think we just say yes, and it's yes, but...
In response to Alex, you're saying that when you feel you need to pull the trigger will be the beginning of November?
Can I just, I think what is great about our discussion and the task-based approach of Parsons is that they help inform that decision of when it's time to pull the trigger based on their phase one, or I don't know what they call it, phase one or part one, or their upfront work that you have in front of you will inform that decision if they feel... And that, I think is, as you said, a couple of weeks to do there. I mean, they're pretty nimble, they have a lot, they have a lot of staff that they can throw at this. They, like I said, their folks are still on the road in Connecticut. If they need to get up and do additional traffic counts, they had every confidence that they could be very timely with information. But it's kind of a layered approach. If they get through layer one and they say, we need more, then we'll go to layer two. And I think, and the reason why they do that is to protect the town's costs, because I'll give you, this is my opinion only, but I don't think we're going to get paid for the work, no matter, under any scenario, because MGM is saying here, we're doing this for PVPC, and five out of seven agree that that's the right approach. So if we go to the gaming commission for a forced disbursement, the gaming commission may say, well, why don't you just do what these guys did, it worked for them, and say you're on your own.
But, wait, could I just, what is the timeline? I still haven't heard, and if, and if y'all don't know, that's okay. Because it sounds like maybe we're sort of, we can't have a timeline because it depends on MGM. Is that where we are, or is there a timeline?
It does depend on MGM to the extent that there's a study that they've commissioned that is not ready and final today. But our hope and our goal, our objective would be to get it in October.
Mark?
Yeah, just two things. One is, Stephen, to your question, just point of, you know, the mass gaming commission is going to say, well, five out of seven, why didn't you? We ought to have that story now, not wait till the gaming commission says why. We ought to go to the gaming commission and say, even though five out of seven agree to it, we didn't because of, and we're not because of, and we will be asking for separate reimbursement because of many of the issues that we're talking about here. We don't believe that PVPC has our best interests in mind. We're far more impacted than the other community, whatever it is. I mean, we went to their meeting and they weren't including, you know, intersections and areas we did. Whatever it is, we ought to be proactive about seeking reimbursement. The second thing is, this 11th... The second thing is this letter from MGM, I mean, I'm really concerned about it. It sounds to me like it's a, you know, it's a, I'll tell you what, if you use our traffic study and back off, we'll give you $15,000, which we're, by law, we're obligated to give you probably anyway, but it, it sounds like they're trying to bribe us into keeping from doing the right thing. And I think this letter deserves a pre, pre immediate response, saying, thank you very much, but no, thank you, oh, by the way, we expect you to pay for our lawyers anyway. I mean, this is a, I'm really upset by this letter. This is, I think, I think a lot of gumption sent about something like this, saying, you know, just back off what you wanna do, do it our way, and, and we'll do what we have to do. I mean, this letter really annoys me. And I just saw it for the first time just now, but I've got a chance to-
Well, let me just suggest to you that I think you're right, that this letter deserves a strong response, but believe me, it's not worth giving yourself an adjective over it.
I understand.
Because, you know, why does a, why does a rock fall? Because it's heavy. You know, why, why, why does MGM send out a letter like that? Because they are what they are.
And I, my concern about the traffic studies isn't so much the counting and who's doing what intersections, and that's the projection side of it, which is the second half that Stephen was talking about. And I have spoken to Stephen, I've heard him speak in various groups, and that is, it's not just people who are coming to use the casinos, but it's, of course, the employees, and also their building at Union Station, their east coast call center, which should be a very large number of employees coming into the area. And I know the projections really aren't based in that. So, a lot of the assumptions and the, where they're gonna go with the projections, those two elements worry me. And I hope that when we go and you look at their modeling, we realize that we are not Detroit, we're the northeast, I've lived in the Midwest, and that model is, is very questionable in a lot of the assumptions, and I'm sure Brinkman will be looking at that too.
Yeah, I'm sure they will. And, and, you know, obviously, the point that you're making is a very significant one. If they have omitted from their basic assumptions about traffic flows, you know, a significant component, you know, namely their employees.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a major flaw, obviously, and it's something that ought to be pointed out, and will be pointed out.
Marie, can I just ask one more thing?
Sure.
Are we on offense or defense?
Well, um-
No, I mean, that's the, because we only have one strategy, it's either offense or defense. We know it's coming. And as you said, MGM is what it is. It's a, it's a multi-billion dollar corporation that could fill this room with just the associate lawyers that they wanna have working on the case, as opposed to, you know, every other lawyer they have on the, on retainer. So, my question is, if we're on offense, then we have to act like we're on offense. If we're on defense, then fine, let's sit back and see what everything's, how it's gonna affect the community. Because what we talked about, um, at our subcommittee meeting was that we know there's gonna be an impact, and it's gonna be a quality of life impact. So, we either need to go on the offensive about how we're going to mitigate as much as humanly possible, the effects of that impact on our, on this community. It isn't a good thing. One way or the other, unless you're gonna get a job there as a CEO, it's not a good thing for this town. So, I think we need to have the approach that we're on offense. That letter from MGM is really just a good little smack on the back of the head, saying, go home Long Meadow, and we'll talk to you later, come, you know, just follow what we want you to do. So, if we're gonna go on offense, that means you're gonna go on offense, you're gonna go and get your own information, we're gonna refute their studies, and we're gonna do, we're gonna go and state our case. If we're on defense, then the reality is, you sit back and let it all come through, and then try to respond to it. And, and I'm not the type of person, I don't respond well. I react. And that's good and bad, depending on where you are in life, okay, and what situation you're in. But the reality is, responding is thoughtfulness and being, you know, and taking it all in. They're gonna, we're gonna get inundated with this stuff toward, in the 11th hour. And to your point, Alex, we're not gonna be able to, to react. We're not gonna be able, you're gonna have a traffic study that's gonna be, have to be done on top of a public safety study and so forth. And my opinion is, and, and it's a board decision, but I think it's time to go on the offense. And we've been sitting down and waiting for all this stuff to come together, and we've got our attorneys now, who have established a timeline, and I think, though, it's time to go on the offense. Instead of sitting back and waiting to see what the study's gonna be, and how it's gonna, and I think the five of us here with the town manager have already said there's gonna be an impact, and, you know, we talked about different intersections. So, why, why would we wait for a study being commissioned by the, the casino, the giant in the room, to say, here's what we think it's gonna be an impact to your community, when they don't know our community, we do? And I, and I just think that we, we gotta stop sitting back and, and having to react, and that, this is the first time we met. So, I'm just saying that, to this board, we gotta stop sitting back and saying, let's just wait, let's just wait, let's just wait, because there, there is no waiting. There's, there's less than two months to put this together.
Well, I don't think that that's what we're hearing tonight. I think that they said we, we've got a expert on board. In fact, you have a second expert, you're just talking about eight October this month, and moving ahead on your due diligence, there's a TEC report over there, Brinkman is talking about moving in phases. And so, they're, they're talking about starting right now. I don't think anyone's talking about waiting until the end of November or December. We, we have someone on board, and I think what you're hearing tonight is, you have a board here that is anxious on defending Long Meadow on what's coming up.
Yeah, no, I think we are taking the offensive approach. I mean, in terms of contacting the MGC, sending these things, trying to get to state pushbacks. I mean, you know, these are offensive things, and not waiting till the last minute, you know, on. So, we are, we have been, you know, I think that timeline, I'm not referring to it for purposes of the meeting law, but that timeline, I think, shows a, we're, we're ready to, you know, forward ahead and put our best foot forward.
But to Mark's point, I, I think that, you know, if we were on offense, we, and I know we just got the letter, but we take that letter and we respond to MGM and say, this is what we are going to do. With, with it going to the Mass Gaming Commission, with the pushback that this study doesn't, we don't believe it's gonna, you know, it's a regional study, we're looking at our town, and I don't, I, I just, again, we either know what's gonna be in that traffic study or we don't. And if we don't, then we're not prepared. If we already know what's in the traffic study, then it should be, we should be hiring the consultant to say, tell us what's in there, what's not in there. We're, if, if the chapter of the book is 90% done, we wanna, we really wanna wait for the last 10% to drop? And how long are you willing to wait for that?
Well, I think that the process is beginning, we're very anxious, because this is a very important topic for Long Meadow, and what's gonna happen in the future. So, I think we need to start communication flow, and when we were saying in the very beginning, if we do want to communicate ideas on strategy, or, or next steps, or concerns about what the step was, I think we need to send letters or information to Stephen, who will direct it to you, so we can have that input, as we, instead of having to wait two weeks and bring you in forward.
I think what you can, you know, and to some extent, it responds to your comments, sir, you know, we, we, and to yours as well, sir. You know, we will draft a response to this letter tomorrow, we'll run it by Mr. Crane, and, you know, we expect that it'll be in the mail before the days end tomorrow.
What, Stephen, did you wanna respond to?
Because I, I agree with you, and I think, you know, I, I would hate to think that we've conveyed that we're waiting. Not every, not every, you know, perceivable lack of progress means that we're waiting. I, I think all we're really doing, to keep with your analogy, which I completely agree with, is we're just reading the defense. And before, you know, before we call the play, we wanna see what defense is out on the field, and that's really what we're doing.
Marie?
Yes.
So, it strikes me that what the response to this letter is, maybe ought to be a decision of this board? I mean, this is kind of a, this is a significant juncture.
I think it's a, it's a decision of our attorneys. Yeah, let us, let us, let us-
Let us draft the original.
No, that's not my, no, no, that's not my point. I don't wanna get into drafting. My point is, this is a question, are we going to sign on to this regional approach in exchange for their $15,000, or are we not? I mean, and actually, I, and as I sit here, I don't know what we're, we're gonna say. And it seems like that's something we have to decide.
I can offer, I, I do agree that that's something that some insight would be helpful on, some guidance. My recommendation, the letter is, you recall, is in response to the letter that, that we sent to MGM requesting a greater sum of money, 50,000 for attorney's fees, and 50,000 for traffic consultant fees. This is, this is their counter, if you will. We can, and the 15,000, I, I think it's not a cap, it's just for the stage of the process. I think they want, and it's not unreasonable for them to want to meet out disbursements commensurate with what the tolls that we're getting char, the towns are getting charged, because it's not just Long Meadows, 50,000, that's not a lot of money to a billion dollar corporation, but there's seven or eight communities looking for this money, and that's now, you know, $400,000. That's, that is real money. And so, I think that's, I, I think that, that's the spirit of what they're trying to do here, is trying to keep that. So, one option is just say, uh, we will, um, we will participate in the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission study, although we have no, although we are not bound to only have that be our only means of assessing traffic impacts, and we reiterate our quest for, you know, we maybe hold off on the request for traffic money now, and just request the money for the legal fees now for the 50,000. Or, you know, just say, we want 50,000 for legal and traffic, and we will still participate in the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission study. This is something we can certainly kick around, but I think that, I guess, I, I think I'm hearing a consensus of the board. I don't know if you, if you guys are hearing it. Hopefully, when we talk, a consensus.
I'd be interested to know what that consensus is.
That, that, it's a no on the letter, and so, we have to come up with something else.
So, but are we, so, okay, are you proceeding consensus to be that we are going to participate in the PVPC's peer review, or no?
We can, I, I think we can participate in that, not tie ourselves to this agreement. We can just say, yeah, we, we still wanna, we still want you to do, to work for us, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, no matter what MGM says, um, we still want our, we still want money for attorney's fees, and we reserve the right to do our own thing, and we may, and we're gonna ask you for that money too, at some point in time.
Okay.
You got that?
Sounds good.
I can't, I can't talk in right at the same time.
And in the meantime, if there's more concerns, we will send them to you to be sent on, so you'll be like our liaison to the council.
I think that'd be best, yes.
Thank you very much for coming in, and I'm sure you'll be hearing from all of us the next few weeks.
Thank you. So, we will, we will draft a response to this letter consistently with the consensus that has just been manifested by the board, and we'll run it by Mr. Crane tomorrow, and by you, Ms. Evangelies.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to move on to the interviews, and, let's see. The audit committee, why don't we start with you?
Hello.
Hello. Would you please state your name, and for our work, spell your name, and tell us where you're from, and why you would like to be on the audit committee?
Great, hi. My name is Chris Casale, and you want the spelling on that?
Yes, please.
The spelling is C-A-S-A-L-E, Casale. And I just recently moved to Long Meadow from North Hampton, where I was up in North Hampton for about the last 30 years. So, we just purchased a house here on William Street, and I would love to have an opportunity to help the town in any way I can. I have a daughter that's attending the William Street Middle School, and I have been in the investment and banking business for the last 30 years or so, since 1982. So, I have a background, as far as auditing goes, we've been audited in our business, and we know what that is, but it's really just, if I've worked to try to assist, and I believe in overview and transparency in government, so if you can help out in a way, and I know the committee needs some help, I'd like to offer my services at this point, just in general.
Thank you. Well, we're very excited to have you here. And, you know, we're, we can't, we don't even have a quorum yet on the audit.
I, I understand.
So, we've been very anxious, and so, thank you for coming forward.
Sure.
And, any questions?
I would just say, to reiterate my thanks for coming forward, and I appreciate your enthusiasm.
I'd be happy to help, yeah, sure. Anything, sir.
It's not a question, it's more of, I would ask, as a newcomer to Long Meadow, that you just take a minute to try to refresh yourself, or familiarize yourself with some of the stuff that's going on in Long Meadow with, with respect to our, our budget and past audits. I think that there's been a lot of good stuff going on, and that there is always value of a historical perspective as well, especially as we now are starting to switch our budgeting process, but the audits, I think, wouldn't be worthwhile. I encourage you to talk to the town manager to kinda see if you can't get, come up to speed with it, or certainly Ernie Welker, who's been on the audit committee for ever.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And actually, I did have a chance to review minutes going back several years, and, you know, looked at the budgets and where you're at, at this point, just to familiarize myself with this. Up in North Hampton, I was on the North Hampton License Commission for several years, so that was a, a good training ground, if you will. It was interesting to hear about the impact, I guess, that the casino's gonna be making here in, in, in Long Meadow, so obviously, all of that weighs in, and everyone has to look and see what, what we can do to help, so.
There's that one thing. I've known Chris for about 30 years, and when he was looking for a new home, I told him about one that my daughter had looked at on William Street. And he went there and loved the house, and they've done a ton of work on it, and I didn't tell him that the Merryweather Stormdrains Project was coming in there, because I had to make sure he signed his contract first, but every day that I talk to Chris, all I hear about is how much he loves this town, and how great it is, and just watch it walking around, and, and he said, you know, what could I do? And I said, well, we happen to need someone for the audit committee, so if you love it that much, you have to sign up for that. So, he's here because of the pleas that we've had from Ernie Welker, and I have no doubt, and I've, I've worked with Chris in a professional capacity, I have no doubt that he will bring some enthusiasm and energy to that board and, and help them in their deliberation, so. But I'm glad that he's here, he, he's in Long Meadow, and we got him out of North Hampton to move here, so, welcome.
Thank you, and welcome to Long Meadow too.
Thank you.
We take the vote next week, and then you will get the notification in the mail.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you again.
All right. Any other questions or anything? No?
The Grubbs, we'll come after, that's all it is.
No comment, thank you.
Okay, would you please come?
Richard's always selling in our audience.
Good evening to all of you. Fine, thank you, welcome. Could you spell your name also, and tell us where you're from, and you are interpreting for Cultural Council?
Yes, I am. My name is Margaret Landon, L-A-N-D-O-N. I've lived in town for over 40 years now, I think. I'm a retired teacher from the town of Long Meadow, grade seven and eight at Glenbrook. I have three sons who are graduates of Long Meadow, and now two grandsons who are at Center School. So, my investment and my interest continues to, for the betterment of our town. I'm seeking to be reappointed to the Cultural Council. I have served three years, the past three years, and I, according to the Mass Cultural Council guidelines, I can serve another three years. So, I am here to do that and to speak to you.
Thank you very much for coming in and volunteering in the past and in the future. That's a wonderful committee, I'm excited about the things that you've been doing.
We are excited too, Marie, yes.
Questions?
Yes.
Peggy, as an experienced member of the Cultural Council, I'm just wondering what your, what your expectations or hopes are for doing in the coming year with a very, very limited amount of funds that you received from the state.
Very limited, I, I don't know if you can have anything to do with that, but our funds this year, about $4,900. Our Mass Cultural Council, their budget is over 10, over 10 million overall, and it was an increase this year for the state of 1.6 million, so that was encouraging to all of us. Local cultural councils are getting 2.63 million. We are getting 4,997, but we do our best with that. Last year, we had 31 grant applicants, we were able to fund half of them. They were all wonderful projects in the arts, sciences, and humanities. We all always fund the chamber music concerts, not totally, but we are one of the, one of We all always fund the chamber music concerts, not totally, but we are one of the, one of the towns. The Jewish Film Festival, workshops at the library for children and adults. We also take into consideration the grant applications from our senior citizens, of which there are many. There, the theater project for the Over Sixty Club lecture series. So I think we, we have done a very good job looking at the grants, applications and dispersing funds. However, I believe we can do more. We are not as visible as we would like to be. We are going to spend, after we review our grants for the next four meetings, we're going to spend the remainder of our meetings for the year looking at ways to encourage local artists. And there are many, many local artists here in town. So we're going to be brainstorming events or what, whatever is the need to be. But we, we want to expand our role in the community. Because, you know, the arts and sciences and humanities, I think build healthier, more viable communities and they also are essential to our school system and our children. So that's where I see us, I see our expansion, a role of expansion.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No questions?
Yes. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Marie.
And we'll be voting next week.
All right.
And let you know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, I wish you the same. I'd like to go before we go into the consent agenda, the minutes, motion to approve the minutes of September sixteen.
I move approve the minutes of September sixteen, two thousand thirteen, regular meeting of the select board.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now moving on to the consent agenda, is there anything you would like taken off the consent agenda?
Yeah, Marie, I'd like to take two things off the consent agenda only because I want to talk about them, not necessarily oppose them. And one is the block party for Greenacre and the other is the warrant, this special fall town meeting.
Okay, so let's, we won't move ahead with the consent agenda, we'll go ahead with the fall town warrant. Is there a motion to approve the fall town warrant?
I, I have a question first, is what have, what have we approved? Is this the final part of the warrant? This is the very first time that we've spoken about it in the closing it. Are we voting to place this as the warrant for town meeting?
I believe it is.
I think there's the opportunity to make changes if need be. As we get closer to town meeting, I just, this is my first go at it, so I would defer to Paul.
Yeah, there are those fourteen days that are allowed. If you wanted to wait until the twenty-first, you could actually make your approval on the twenty-first.
Okay.
Final have the discussion today.
Then, then I would object to us voting for this warrant because other than seeing it in our packet two weeks ago, I believe it was, or three weeks ago, we haven't had a chance to discuss the warrant articles. In part, we haven't talked about the warrant at all. We haven't talked about whether there's anything the select board would like to have on there or anything like that. So I don't mind having a discussion about it and I would ask that it be voted on at the next meeting so that we can actually have a discussion about these particular articles. Because if they go on after the warrant's printed, it's a disservice to the citizens if, if there is something that we want on there or something we don't want on there based on what's, what's in front of us.
So, and I was going to do that in the, during the discussion on the motion to see if we needed to amend, but we could do it outside the motion. Is there anything that anyone would like to add to the warrant?
Well, I, I think we ought to go article by article, very honestly. I'm prepared to do that.
Well, first I wanted to know, is there anything that someone wanted to add to the warrant, a new article?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to have, have us consider adding a charter review. We've talked about it for a couple of years and, because if we were to have a charter review, we have to have elections for a charter commission. And for us to do this, I mean, we could do it in the spring town meeting as well. But I think if we wait to the spring town meeting to actually, you have to have a vote on a ballot, I believe, to have the charter review. So I just, I, I like to see us have a motion article that says we want to go ahead, go ahead with, or the select board want to endorse a charter review. It's been nine years since the charter was implemented. There's good, bad, good and bad with it. And it's something this board has talked about at least for four or five years in terms of just doing a review of the charter to find out what's working and what's not.
Well, my understanding where we had that discussion last year was that for us to, we don't really need a charter commission in order to do a charter review.
For certain things.
For certain things. See, and those, we were talking about first putting together a committee that was never put together to review and see if there was anything that we wanted to change that would require the commission.
I thought we had legal opinion from town council that, that in fact you couldn't do that and you had to have a charter commission to actually affect charter changes.
I, I've seen this written. I don't know if it's in the bylaws or the charter and I won't be able to find it now. But, and I did discuss with town council, I think, because we had a discussion about boards and committees. I think we've discussed that here. And if, if, if the select board wanted to present an article on, you know, reorganizing boards and committees, you would not need a charter committee to do that. The select board could present that article at town meeting just through its own debate and presentation.
You mean in terms of eliminating the committee, for example?
Whatever you want to do. I mean, in terms of board.
Because that's, that's, and I'm just saying that's the opposite of what council said last year, I believe. That we could not do that type of charter change.
What I had understood, and again, I had seen this one time, but when it talks about how town manager or select board are appointed or compensated, you need a charter review committee. But I think for the, I, I guess, Paul, what I would, what I would recommend is impanel a committee that, basically a work, no, a committee, a working group to go through, identify, you know, maybe have some sessions about what's, what are issues with the charter? And then have that list of issues vetted by council to say what needs a charter review committee, what can the select board do with its own articles? Or you can just do a charter review committee, I suppose, and just have them do everything.
Well, if you have a charter review committee do it, then it's not at the behest of the town manager and/or select board and will answer to themselves and the constituency or citizens of the town and not to us. And that's how you do a charter review. There should be someone in there that, or a committee. I just, we've talked about it for two, three years and maybe even longer, that we're, we're getting at a point where we talk about things that, you know, work and don't work. And I just think that it, there, there was a lot of things that were put together. Charter's open-ended on a lot of, on a lot of things. And one of them's maintenance, for example. And, you know, our CFO's here, he can tell you about the consolidation of the finance department, which still hasn't happened and it's completion yet. And that's nine years down the road. So I think it's, it's something that I would like to see us formally endorse. The other thing, quite frankly, is, you know, we have a couple of citizens petitions on there and I don't know where we all stand or what we thought about it, but, you know, when it comes to article, I would ask that the, the, the changes in the article, article in twelve and article eleven be flipped. So the very last article was that of the casino vote opposing the casino. And because I think number twelve was actually gonna have an impact on quality of life in Long Meadow and I think it needs to be discussed with, as well as the casino. But I also like to see the board, and we have time between now and town meeting, obviously, to put our forth our own article that would support article eleven, as, as it's written right now. Those would be my changes.
Okay. Any other people want to?
Can I ask a question? I guess this charter review is something that I would need to get up to speed on. I mean, could you just tell us, I mean, is?
I think for us to really go into real deliberations about it, we'd have to have it on the agenda, which I would put it on the agenda for the twenty-first. Because right now, if there's really no notice to the public, we would be talking about establishing a commission. So I will put it on for the twenty-first.
And the only, the only thing I'd like to say to that is, Alex, is that the board, we cannot make changes to the charter.
I get that.
Right, no, right. So to, to affect any changes, whether.
No, I guess I was getting at, sort of like, what's, what's the big idea behind it?
The big idea is that we've had a charter that was very open-ended when it was established. In nine years into it, as Mr. Crane alluded to, perhaps there's a need for more committees or less committees. Or the number of people on committees, for example. So you don't run into issues where you can't, you know, you have a committee of nine that you can't have a quorum or something. So, you know, there, and, and there's different things that we can do to certain committees. Like we, I think there's certain things we can do, we can add associate positions to, but we can't expand a committee, for example, because it's defined in the charter. So there are certain things in there that I think we need to have as reviewed. And the only way to really do it is by having a charter commission, which has to be elected and, and then they would do their own work.
Anyone else want to add something to the warrant? Yes?
I, I guess, is that, I don't know, Paul, should we have a, a motion or something to flip the, to flip the articles? I mean, if we're, if we're just editing, I don't know.
Well, for editing, I wanted to go line, warrant by warrant, is Mark's request. So right now, my only question is, did anyone want to add anything?
Got it, okay.
No one else to be added? We'll just go article, article one, anyone want to have any discussion or questioning on that? Article two?
Yeah, I think the explanation down below ought to state what line item changes in the budget caused the need for this. Specifically, this was the vote at the spring town meeting to add funding to the schools. And I think that ought to be put in the, the sentence or two sentences of explanation.
Okay.
And the other question I have on that is, I know the dollar amount that we had put into the budget was three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars additional, have, now that the budget has been passed and settled, how, is that number still the same? Is it, is the need for three eighty-five still there? Or was there any additional state aid either on the town side or school side that could potentially offset that?
I'm sorry, Mark, can I, were you talking about article two?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, I thought it's an article one, I'm sorry, my bad.
The, the numbers that came in for state aid or any of the local receipts?
Well, just, Paul, maybe you need to sit there because it has a microphone. Yeah, thank you.
The final number that came in for the state aid was very close to the number that we had utilized at the time that we presented the budget at the Maytown meeting. I think there was a positive swing of about fourteen thousand dollars, if I recall correctly. Local receipts also came in a little bit higher. But at this point in time, I, I still use that number because there's one component of the whole package that's not yet done and that's our new growth. So I just kept this number as is with the understanding that once that new growth number is certified and all the numbers are finalized, like this number probably would adjust slightly one way or another. But it's still a good ballpark number to start with.
And Paul, that goes for, I know we've had at least one contract settlement since then with the patrol, police patrol officers and that. And there's no additional funds beyond what was in the budget for that?
Uh, we set aside small amounts of money for, for the, all the collective bargaining agreements, not only just one. So that, those, the little pot of money is still there to take care of those.
Right.
Okay. All right, moving on.
Can, can I respond or discuss article two? So, Mark, you were suggesting that we ought to state that the three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is a, is a result of the vote relating to the school budget?
At the spring town meeting, that's all, right.
No, I, my recollection is the amount was three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars.
You're correct. The, the exact amount was three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. They also took off fifty-three thousand dollars from their capital. So the net effect was technically three hundred thousand. The other eighty-five is coming from, we have to raise a deficit for our abatements. We did a settlement with Twin Hills Country Club and that's really where the other eighty-five thousand dollars is coming from.
And that's why it ought to state what the money is.
All right. So you would like to, to have, to discuss the abatements and the school budget?
In the description. No, in the description, which has the, that's right. There's just, we just need one sentence that says this three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is the result of.
This and that, that's all. Just so the people in town know what they're voting for. Because the, the natural question is, why is, why is the budget short three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars? People need to know. The, the spring town meeting, we voted for a non-balance budget.
But isn't, I mean, that three fifty-three could have been any, I mean, we voted on a total budget.
No.
But there was actually a motion to adjust, to amend the budget to put in additional. Right, right. But I, I guess what I'm saying is the three, you could say the three hundred and eighty, the three fifty-three, I mean, that, we, we, I mean, we did not, there was not an article that said three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars for the school budget.
There was an amendment though, Alex.
Right, I understand. But the, the whole, I, I mean.
The amendment's part of the article.
The article was for a budget of a certain amount of money.
But were not for that article in the spring town meeting, we wouldn't be asking for three hundred thousand of this three hundred and eighty-five thousand. That's my thing.
Not for the article.
If it were not for that article, we would not be asking for at least three hundred thousand of this. My only point, it's, it's just a matter of, of making this fly through the town meeting quicker so people read it and say, that's right, we, we approved this for the schools, that's why we need the money today. We would not be, you know, and we ought to, you're right, put down, and oh, by the way, and there's eighty-five thousand dollars that we need for, for some, that's, I, I'm, I'm not trying to assess blame, I'm just trying to put down an explanation so that people aren't gonna stand up and say, why is the budget out of balance? I don't remember. Or I wasn't at the spring town meeting, that's all.
Okay, anything else on article three?
I mean, I, I understand, money's fungible.
Right, I guess that's sort of my point.
Right, but, but again, were not for that vote at the spring town meeting, we'd be sitting here asking for eighty thousand dollars, not three hundred and five thousand dollars. That's all.
All right, so any other comments on article two? How about article three? Four?
Yes.
Can I ask a question on article three, Paul?
Yes.
On ninety thousand dollar tri- tri-annual update. We have, it seems like a tri-annual or.
We, we, the last.
Every, every year.
Right, the last two or three, or two out of the last three town meetings, we appropriated money for what was known as a measure and list revaluation, where they physically had to go out and inspect properties. And we broke that total cost down in, into, into two appropriations. It was a hundred thousand dollars, what, one town meeting and the other half a hundred thousand dollars at another town meeting. That is ongoing and that is expected to be completed by next August for the FY fifteen also. But there is also what's known as a triennial revaluation, which analyzes sales data. And that has to be done every three years. It's, it's a separate type of revaluation and that's what this ninety thousand dollars is for.
Okay, article four? Yes?
Yeah. In article four, one of the things we're talking about is, this is for the pump station. And it says, we're gonna appropriate the first principal payment out of, if you will, in, income, revenue for this year. Have we completed our discussion about the use of retained earnings for this project? The water retain, in this case, water retained earnings or sewer retained earnings. I'm gonna ask the same thing about article five for sewer retained earnings.
Both of these were bonded appropriations.
I understand that. But the amount that we bond, we could choose to lessen by putting, by voting to put money out of retained earnings into the projects.
Yeah, absolutely true.
And, and the fact that we now see the retained earnings at the end of the last fiscal year, which we had a good vision for, but we didn't have exactly, may give us a better insight as to how are we doing relative to our targets, I won't say maximums, but our targets for the sewer and water retained earnings funds and if there isn't funds available at this point to use for these projects.
We could change this around to appropriate the money from retained earnings to offset the bond, the total bond cost? I mean, if that's what you're looking for.
Well, I'm just saying that if our retained earnings came in above where we were projecting them to for, for both the sewer and the water, you know, do we want to just let it grow or do we use that and literally have a, a beneficial impact on our water and sewer expenses because we'll be bonding less money? That's all.
Um, just let me add that we, we did get certified on the retained earnings. I don't know if you saw those amounts for the water.
Yeah, I did.
It's four hundred and seventy, okay. I, you know, it's.
We're above, especially, we're above our target.
Right. It, it is certainly an option, Mark. The only reason that why I chose to take this out of water receipts is because they were actually built into the rates when we set the rates last spring.
Right, and I know, you know, I, I understand that. But, but I'm just thinking maybe instead of taking it out of receipt, I mean, and since we already set the rates, if we take it, don't take it out of receipts, we're gonna have the money go back into, I mean, it's.
Six, one, half dozen on the other.
Right, I understand that.
So you just answered article five too?
Well, that was my question for both, but the point is that, you know, you know, I, I just think we ought to consider.
And I don't disagree with you. I think that the issue is that when we look at projects for next year, that we look at that excess retained earnings.
Okay.
All right. So anything else on article five? Article six?
Well, just who do we stiff for nineteen grand? When you, when we talk about prior year bills, and every, every town meeting, we have a prior year bill, these aren't necessarily just for last year. Some of them could be.
Well, right, they could be from years ago, but this one happens to be incurred in FY thirteen.
And just so, because we're on TV talking about right now, that these are bills that came in after the fiscal year was.
In, in, in this particular case, this bill was above and beyond the appropriation. So we could not pay it and it's being held until we have an appropriation to pay for such.
Okay, article seven?
My only question is why?
Why article seven?
Yeah, it's a, it's a charitable account, isn't it? Why are we, because is this something that's gonna lead to like the sort of the.
I'm sorry, are you referring to article six still or article seven?
Article seven.
Our article seven, and the only thing that article seven is doing is by law, any money that comes into the town goes into the general fund. And that includes the interest. So what they want to do is, is accumulate the interest in their own account. That, that's what this is trying to accomplish.
So Paul, you're answering, you asked the question again about. So, Paul, you're answering, you asked the question again about vending machines.
Is it going to be like vending machines every year and we have to...
No, once this is done, it's permanently, the interest goes in there.
That's all I want, okay.
Article Eight? Article Nine?
No, no, Eight, I did have something. Uh, I, I think we ought to add a, add a line that says the town will seek reimbursement for some or all of these expenses by MGM using the provisions of the state gaming regulations. Because we do intend to do that. Now, and for people at home, Article, Article Eight is seeking funds for the, for payment of experts to the casino mitigation, just as we were talking about earlier. But I think we ought to let people know, we seek re, we will be seeking reimbursement.
All right, uh, anything else on Article Eight? Article Nine?
Why?
Article Nine?
Oh, yeah, why did...
Oh, the play tennis court?
No, why, are, why do we have a request for ten thousand dollars when we have a multi-million dollar budget in the department?
Take scare of this.
Because it was not a budgeted expense and af, we had a discussion in Grover there this year, after the town budget was set, that we wanted to make the care and maintenance of the courts a town-funded function, um, as opposed to a donation-funded function. And so we wanted to make that a part of the, the budget going forward, and since it wasn't included in, as a budget item in the budget for the Springtown meeting, we said at the time, we would bring this forward at Fall Town Meeting to make sure that happens.
What is the fourteen thousand being spent on?
It's, it's not, it's for next year.
Yeah, I know.
Right.
What will it be spent on? What will it be spent on specifically?
It'll be spent on prepping the courts in the springtime.
No, I want specifics. Is this contracts or what are we doing with this for? This is a lot of money. What are we doing with the money?
Right now, we have a, we have a contract with someone who maintains the courts and I, I think that we're going to, and the costs are, the costs incurred have added up to about ten to fifteen thousand.
Okay.
And so I think what we wanted, and as we said, and when we talked about this earlier this year, this is kind of a new thing for us to be doing. And so this year was the first year we set it up where it was a contractor kind of going in, or I don't know if it was even by contract or a part-time employee, but, um, we're going to analyze, did we get the best service for the money and is there a different way to do it? But we knew basically how much it costs us to open, maintain, and close the courts for the year.
And why are we not doing it in-house, I guess is my real question, I don't understand.
There's a level of specialization to it, that, and we may decide to do that going forward, but we didn't assign...
Well, okay, well, this was, this was the talk we had in the spring. When are we going to decide if we're going to do it one way or the other then? This, we had this discussion four or five months ago with this board.
Do you mean, like, going forward?
Yeah, why, why are we not maintaining these things ourselves? I don't understand why we're expending fifteen thousand dollars out of a budget when we have the staff in this town that should be able to maintain those courts. We have equipment down there, we're rolling them some now, this is not, this is not that big of a deal. I don't, I just don't understand why.
I can go back and resubmit information that I've given to you before about the specialization with clay courts, I don't really recall it off the top of my head. Um, I, and certainly we can talk about it, um, if you want to talk about it offline, I can go back and, uh, talk to the Parks and Rec Director and the DPW Director about what parts of it are specialized and can be done in-house and cannot be done in-house. This is simply...
Well, everything there can be done in-house, Stephen. There's not a single thing on those courts can't be done in-house with our personnel if they have the equipment to do it.
I, I think part of it, now that I'm starting to remember, a part of it is tied to, um, workday, um, in terms of when the workday, the DPW starts versus when the courts need to be open, overtime questions. I, I think we're trying to find the most cost-efficient way to do it, and at some level, doing it in-house is not the most cost-efficient way to do it.
And, and I would like to be in one hundred percent agreement with you if I actually seen a program that was presented that justified that amount of money in the context that you've just explained.
I, I can resubmit that. We just, we did go over this earlier this year.
Do you want to put that on an agenda, to have a report from Barry?
No, I just, I just have the same question we had in the spring, is why? And I don't think I ever got an answer in the spring was why. And the level of service that we received, I would debate our statement of work on what was happening down there, because you and I had several discussions, and I still have several concerns about those courts, but...
Sure, and, and Richard, your point, and, and I appreciate, because I don't play tennis that much, I appreciate you letting us know, because I'm, I'm not out there every day, that certain things weren't being done to a level that they should be done. And so when you say, when are we going to decide one way or the other, um, what we're going to do, it's when we figure out the system that works for us, and we obviously haven't figured that out yet. And again, this is, this is something that's still a relatively new function. It was not a town function, it was done by volunteers and then through donations, through essentially contracted service. Like all functions, or like many functions that we do, we are always looking to see, can it be done more efficiently and, and more cost-effectively by contracting it versus doing it in-house? And this is essentially the same analysis. So, we will go back and look how this year went, what we spent, what we got, and decide, can it be done better in-house and, and, or can it not be done, but more cost-effectively in-house? And how do we get a higher level of service?
Yeah, I, I guess the only comment that I'll have and we'll let the issue go, is that the level of service that we receive for quote professional services on those courts, I don't think was adequate.
Okay.
Because it was mentioned many times on the amount of maintenance that was being placed on those courts, so there's something wrong in our, we, we got money and we got a standard, but something isn't clicking. We're paying the money, but we're not getting back what the service should be on those courts. That's my feelings.
Okay.
It's not normal to have weeds growing out of clay courts. And it, and there's many other things down there, but that's just some of the problems.
Marie, can I, I have something on that.
On which one?
On the same article about the, the tennis courts.
Okay.
Um, two things. One is, we had, we actually had someone that was hired by Park and Rec the first year after it was open, it was less than four thousand dollars a year to open and close those courts. Every night, every morning. Uh, we decided, our town decided not to rehire that person because we, and we want to be more professional about it, or whatever the situation was. The maintenance of those coach, courts, Richard, have nothing to do with that dollar amount, because the weeds on the court are, should be handled by our DPW, not by a contractor.
Right.
As they go through the park, at Bliss Park, every, every, so often, based on their schedule, I would imagine, and they spray, spray for weeds, why don't they hit the court? That has nothing to do with a professional contractor. Quite to the contrary, I have, I know you talked about what it would cost to run the courts and Barry had said, well, we're waiting for a donation and so forth. I don't think I've ever seen something that said, here's the cost of operating the courts for a year. We had a ballpark number, I don't remember seeing it. You could have gave it to us, I just don't remember seeing it, okay? So I like to see that as well, because there was a cost to have that gate open and closed, and part of it is, well, DPW might not be in the morning or be there at night or something. But we already, we already did have someone who did that every day and every night without fail, and we didn't bring that person back. Now, whether they were a part-time employee or not-employed, whatever it was, I like to know the details of what the contracting will be for fourteen thousand dollars for a year. I don't, I don't see it, because other than weeds, the rolling of that court should be done by the same person that's opening and closing, in my opinion. And as you said, other than if there's big divots in there from the winter, or something's turned over in the wintertime, the maintenance of that court, once it's up and running, should be minimal.
It is.
I mean, you, you don't get people digging holes in the middle of the clay core.
I will, I will definitely get an agenda coordinate with Stephen when that report will be ready. Okay, um, going on to Article Ten. Article, long, ten, eleven.
Um, I'd just like to see, I'd like to have the board switch Articles Eleven and Twelve. I think the, the article that's going to keep people at the town meeting is Article Eleven. I like to see it be the last article, because I think Article Twelve, if the room empties, uh, there are some, some significant impacts to, I believe, quality of life and public safety with Article Twelve that need to be addressed, and I think the more people in the room, the better.
Any objection to switching the articles? No? Okay, well, we'll switch it, eleven and twelve. Any other questions or, or concerns on either eleven or twelve?
Uh, the only other concern on the casino issue is at some point in time, I know we were going to hold a public forum, um, and, um, at some point, I would expect the board to have some sort of position on the, the casino issue, regardless of where we go with mitigation and so forth.
Okay.
Actually, on that, Marie, uh, I know we had a date and then it got canceled. Where do we stand on having a forum?
I have to send out another doodle poll.
Do you think we'll be able to do that before November?
Yeah, but we haven't done that yet.
Well, right now, the only date this group was available was on the sixteenth. Now, if I send out new dates, maybe people's changes, positions have changes on when they're available. I hesitate to hold one if we don't have the majority of the board, but...
I mean, it seems like if we're going to have a casino forum, we have to do it before November fifth.
I'm not sure if that's necessary, really, to have that before November fifth, because this, it's supposed to be to discuss the implications of a casino and educate about the process, but whether the town votes yes or no, whether we're supporting, or if we have any comments or support on warrants, we could definitely do that on the twenty-first. But, um, to...
Well, you get...
Have a communication with the public. I'm not, I'm not saying it's not going to happen before November fourth, but I'm not sure if it's really, it would almost be a duplication if we just talk about whether we want a no vote or a yes vote on that. So I'm not sure if I consider the forum just to be for that.
Well, I guess my recollection of the whole idea of it, because this, it was the beginning of September, I drafted a resolution, um, and passed it out, uh, you know, similar to Article Eleven. And I believe, Mark, you had said, well, before we express an opinion, we have to hear from town residents, and that was the whole point of having the forum. So, for, uh, so, so that was sort of the holdup on us expressing a view. So if we, if we have the town meeting, I would hope that we would have expressed a view on it at that point, at, at a minimum. Those of us who are going to a town are going to have to vote, um, and it seems like the, the, the original stated purpose of the forum would have already gone by, because then we would have already had expressed a view, and that was exactly the reason why we were going to do the forum.
Well, see, I was considering the forum, I was even talking about doing it before the no vote, because I felt it was important for us to educate the public and also see how people felt about mitigation issues. Now, does the board feel that we can't have a position in town meeting without having the forum first? Or how, how do you feel about that?
I, I, I would, I would put the, a casino forum for the public, I understand that you might get a lot of the same people at the town meeting, and that's their right, that's what they can do, um, which could actually be looked at in the charter review, but that's a different issue. But, um, uh, I think that it's imperative much more, I, I'd rather have a casino forum than a joint meeting with the school committee to talk about a budget, because you can have that, no, no, and, and my point is, because the, the, the meeting is on, in the first week of November, and the budget instructions, we have a calendar here, um, and the, and the budget instructions aren't going to go out until December. So I mean, we have more time, in other words, to meet with the school committee than we do to have a casino forum before the, the town meeting, and that's, that was what my point was, is that.
So my question is, do you feel, so you feel you couldn't make a decision on supporting the article or not, do you have the forum, so you'd like the forum first?
No, no, what I, what I don't, I, I don't like when people put words in my mouth. What I'm saying is, you said, you just said, I thought the forum was to educate people.
Right.
So if the forum's to educate people, wouldn't that be the first step, and I know it's a citizen's petition that's on the, on the, um, on the warrant, but wouldn't it be better to educate them before they come to a town meeting to vote on it? If that's what we want to do, if we truly want to educate people about the pros and cons of a casino coming into Springfield? Because there are some pros, you might have some people that get up and speak in favor of it, I, I don't know. But the casino forum is, you can have a casino forum after the no vote, but what's it going to do?
Right.
The citizenry already spoke at a town meeting, unless, you know, so I can form my own position on anything, I guess, at any point in time, but I think, I don't think I, I don't think we have to wait for the citizens to weigh in, but I think it's the right thing to do.
Okay, so that was my question, you'd like it. Well, the, we can definitely do it the week of October, um, even the, week of sixteenth or the twenty-first, and, um, or the twenty-eighth. So I will send out a new doodle poll tonight and let everyone decide where they want to have that.
Can I, on the budget calendar, we have, it says in October twenty-first, the select boards meet with the school committee and the finance committee to talk about the next year's budget.
No, uh, it's the sixteen.
Or is that just a...
That was just a...
That might have just been thrown out there.
Okay, okay.
To, to get a schedule.
That's why I was asking.
These needs to be true.
All right, so I will...
Can I add to the discussion about the casino forum?
Well, actually, uh, you could just tell me which, if you have any wa, changes you want on it, but I'm sort of just talking about the warrant now. And it led into the forum and you said you wanted it before.
Right, well, and, well, and I guess what I was getting at, and, I mean, you had posed the question of, do we need to have the casino, you know, do we need to...
And everyone seemed to say yes, so I'm going to go before.
Well, actually, we heard one person.
Oh, you don't, well, I thought you were thinking that clear you wanted it before too.
Well, I guess what I, but you posed the question, do we need to have this forum in order to, for members to express a view? My view is that I don't think we necessarily have to do it. I, I, you know, the forum really wasn't my idea, I think it was really Mark's idea, um, and, um, I, I was fine with it, because if that's what was going to, to get select board members to have a comfort level to weigh in on the, on this issue, that was fine. I guess what I'm getting at is if we don't end up having this casino forum, uh, you know, before November fifth, its utility is rather limited.
Oh, well, I think there's other purposes to having the forum. I think that we discussed having that forum even before there was a, a no article on the warrant. So, because the casinos are an issue that's coming into town and mitigation, it's a large issue. But we will definitely know by the meeting of the twenty-first, if for some reason this is not pulling together before the fifth, so we can have casino yes or no support on the meeting of the twenty-first. Any other questions on the warrant or issues? Okay, um, can we have a motion at this point, or do you want to see the changes in the wording? We can push this off for the twenty-first, Mark.
I, I think we should put it off till the twenty-first also. Historically, we voted article by article rather than on the entire, uh, warrant.
Why don't we wait till the twenty-first, we'll, we'll make the alterations and then we'll, we'll go through and finish that. And you said you wanted to talk about the Greenacre?
Yeah, the, the only thing I wanted to mention is that, that mostly the times our block parties, our block party requests come in for, you know, a Saturday evening or something like that. And, and I think people need to understand that this is, Thursday, October thirty-first, it is Halloween, it was specifically for Halloween, and this isn't really so much as a block party as it is to close the street for trick-or-treating. And I'm just wondering if we aren't setting an interesting precedent here by closing streets for trick or, to, to traffic on, on Halloween, which is not for a block party. I guess it's a broader discussion also, uh, we've got a, an application from one individual on the street, and how do we know that this represents most of the people in the street, or rather than just one person? And now, I understand Greenacre is an unusual circumstance for Halloween, that they, they, with trick-or-treaters, and it's probably a good idea from a safety point of view to do this. But I think the process by which we are doing it ought to be, we ought to take a look at.
Marie, can I say something?
Yes.
We've already set that precedent at least three of the last four years.
See, I went back and I hadn't seen any...
We, we closed, I know we closed, uh, part of Ellington or Farmington because of the historical perspective of them giving out the big candy bars instead of the little ones, and everybody flocks there. Greenacre has that same reputation with the carving of pumpkins by one of the residents up there, um, but we've already done it. We've done it for at least three, three times on this board that I can recall. One was even, um, I think it was maybe Belleclaire, where the, the street where the gas station's at, is that, Belleclaire and Cross Street? Because Cross Street, they were worried about cars cutting down Cross Street, because it's Cross Street, but we did, we closed that one as well.
I, I, fine, I, I went back to, and, and did not notice, see him for that, because more terrorists, we, every year, the same week, we've approved, and I've been on the board, we've approved the block party that same week every year. But this was one I hadn't seen before, and that, and nor had I, had I seen other Halloweens.
I have a general concern of closing streets on Halloween, and it's from the standpoint of what's one street versus another. I mean, I know there's some maybe cul-de-sacs or dead ends, but pretty much all the streets are pretty, are pretty busy on Halloween in Long Meadow. And, um, you know, you could, you could pretty much close off, you know, probably half the town to the traffic on some of the streets, and I don't, and I'm not opposed to this, I mean, I, because they, they put in for the request and we've done it before, but I just, you know, at some point in time, it does, actually, I think it actually creates more of a traffic issue than it will alleviate. it does, actually, I think it actually creates more of a traffic issue than it will alleviate, but.
In regards to block party, I don't think everyone on block party streets sign on to the block party. So until we get a complaint, I'm, I'm supporting.
And that's fine, but this is a missing use, because it's not a block party, it's a street closure request. And which is, it's, this is akin to me to closing the, the portion of Long Meadow Street in front of Center School per field. There's a lot of children crossing it, it's the right thing to do, it oughta be used as a street closing request and not a block party, there's nothing to it.
And keep that in mind in the future.
For what it's worth, this did come up in our department head meeting today, and this is, of course, my first Halloween here. And they said, you gotta check out Greenacre. It has the one place in town that has the biggest deal on Halloween, I'd never even heard of it. And then, obviously, it's been endorsed by the police chief, and the fire chief did, did also, I wouldn't say endorsed it, but he said, you know, yeah, the street's closed, but it's one maybe year, and it's, it's one of the biggest things in town, or is the biggest thing in town on that night. So from that perspective, you know, the department is in charge of public safety, are okay with it.
And it sounds like the town manager will be there, Halloween night.
I'd like to give out the candy and stay home.
I will be, I will be there, and it, the five hundred, five hundred person is an underestimate.
Oh, it is.
Because, and it, and this, I know what Mark's saying, but I've been down there, and it is a block party. Every house is partying, it's, it's.
Greenacre's a party street.
It's an unbelievable area.
You moved to wrong area.
Yeah, people, I've never.
I'm telling you, Chris, you'll get that, trust me.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to support the?
I make a motion to approve the block party request for Greenacre Avenue and Warren Terrace.
Second, any second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and now the block party at Warren Terrace doing.
You approve.
Oh, you did both, I'm sorry, all right, great.
Sure invitations are being shipped in the mail as we speak.
All right, subcommittee reports. Do you wanna tell about?
I'm sorry, did we vote on Warren Terrace?
We did both.
You did both at the same time.
I said, I made my motion as Warren and Greenacre.
Second.
Seconded it. Did you wanna do both, Paul?
The casino?
The casino, and you also took Mark's place at a high school this week.
And the casino, Marie and I met with Stephen, and we, this was after, I'm not sure if you were there, Marie, but I know Stephen Elise had spoken to the attorneys, and we came up with, was it the penitentiary, and, or what was presented to us. And one of the things we talked about, and I, and I alluded to it a little bit earlier, is that we know, and I think we gotta have a perspective of, and we talked about this at our meeting, of, we know that there's gonna go into being an impact of the casino. And, and I think, and, and we gotta have our ducks lined up, obviously, but we know there's gonna be quality of life. And the quality of life is gonna be affected in some ways, or it's gonna go down. And what we need to do, I think, is really start, and this is what we talked about, is looking at what can we improve on the other side of things to help offset some of the declines in quality of life, whether it's through traffic or anything else that might come through town. We're not gonna stop it, right, that's for sure, we're not gonna stop it, MGM's gonna come in, it's gonna be in Springfield, I don't care what Palmer does, anybody can say what they wanna say. So we know it's not gonna, it's, it's going to come in, and we can't stop it, so what our perspective, I think, it should be, and what we talked about was, what else can we improve upon? Like, for example, can we improve our parks to the point where it helps offset some of the aggravation? So maybe you're not driving on Route Five on a Sunday, you're going to a park because it's been improved, and there's better play equipment and so forth. You know, we know, we've talked about it before, traffic lights, for example, we had an example, how to control them and sync them throughout the whole town. So there is, is there a way that we can alleviate traffic, not just during casino peak hours, but during regular traffic hours, for example? And those are the types of things that we talked about, that I think we need to start to look at as a board, is what can we do to help increase the quality of life if we're not gonna be able to stop the casino from going into Springfield, if that's what we choose to do? But I, I think that was really, and then really looking over the timeline, which you now have, and which we shouldn't discuss, and everything else. So without discussing that, that's what we were waiting for, and we had a lot of conversation about that.
And the high school?
The only thing I wanna say is that what we did, is that Stephen sent that letter to MGM, which then generated this letter. That was the other thing we talked about, is, you know, sending it out a little bit earlier.
And we are posting.
Sending what out? The letter to MGM, asking them to meet, I'm sorry, to sit down.
And we do post the minutes, I gotta get mine up, our draft minutes, and then we'll, so if you ever wanna know, or review what's done, we have the minutes up.
They're nice, short meetings. I went to the high school meeting, and it was interesting, there seems to be some ongoing issues there that they're addressing with water faucets, and especially in the science labs and so forth, but I think that, and I wanna bring it up, is, and the biggest issue is that there seems to be some deficiencies in the budget. And, you know, there's, there was one article that we were talking about that was voted on, and it was for the, I don't know how that actually ended up with the, the pool overflow tank.
Surge tank.
The surge tank, that we were looking to possibly do it in-house, I don't know what, what came of that. They were going to the next meeting, or next day after the meeting, to see if we could offset some of those costs. But I think everything else is on course, there's a big punch list, but it's being reduced all the time. The superintendent and the principal are on top of a lot of things that they're seeing issues with, and bringing them to the attention of the, of the contractor and our owner's project manager. I think in that regard, I, that part of it was, I just gave Mark the packet, it was this thick of, of the punch list, I mean, it's just, it's huge. So the only question I have is, and I, and I like to bring it up, is where we are in terms of project costs, because I, I have a concern that we're a little bit more in-depth than we're, or a little bit in the hole more than what we think. And it's going to have to be, if it stays where it is, from what I think it is, we're gonna end up having to do something at a town meeting probably in the spring or something, or maybe next fall, but I think we better know about it, and it's better to know about it now than it is somewhere down the road, so.
If I may, I think what Paul's, for the first part, it's amazing how you have this giant seventy-six million dollar building, and so many rooms, and feet of hallway, and you're talking, you spend a half an hour talking about the reduction things on the, you know, the flow reducers on the sinks and the, in the labs, and, you know, and outlet not being flush with the drywall in a certain room, which is essentially what the punch list is. And I'll give, between OMR, the project designers, Jocelyn, Lees, the project managers, and Gilbain, they've really taken a, you know, thousands of item-long punch list and got it down to hundreds of items, and I'm sure they're down even further since that meeting. That's what they essentially do every day. Landscapers are doing the outside, and the, Gilbain is working on punch list. In terms of the finances of it, what you're basically following up on is what, Mark and I had co-signed an email back in July about this issue when it first became, came to our attention. And you're right, we've been tracking it and watching it go, number go up-down, mostly up. And it's kind of complex, because a lot of it's tied to how the project is financed, which is, you have an overall bonding authorization of seventy, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, seventy-eight million, which was the whole project. And actually, you know, somewhat remarkably, the project's coming in, two million dollars, we think, two million under budget, overall, seventy-six. But out of that seventy-six, or the, the original seventy-eight, a portion was the town share, and a portion was the state share through the Mass School Building Association Authority, sorry, Mass School Building Authority, MSBA. And that share, the MSBA shares, based on projections of reimbursement for certain things. Well, what we found is, as the project has evolved, is certain changes into how MSBA does their reimbursements were made right, right at the start that cut the MSBA share, and then further decisions that they've made down the line have also further reduced MSBA share. Town share goes up a commensurate amount. And so the town share was forty-four million and change. It's possible that the overall town share of the project, even though your overall project is under budget, the town share is higher than what was originally authorized. I believe the select board can authorize additional fund, additional borrowing or additional transfers to cover it. It may or may not require a town meeting, Paul, I don't know if you wanna?
Well, depending on what the amount is, and the OPM is tracking it, it does vary as, as time goes on because of changes and reimbursements. But depending on what the amount is, this board's gonna have to make a decision. And, you know, if it's a large amount, certainly we don't have that type of money in free cash or anything like that. We do have room to authorize to borrow more money. If it is a smaller amount that we have available in free cash, it would still be a decision of this board to take it from our reserves if there is a deficit, and just fund the deficit in that fashion. But until that amount is known, and we probably won't have a good handle on that until February or March, that's kind of the deadline that we set for the OPM, given the timing of the articles for the annual town meeting. Until such time as we know that, that number, we really can't, you know, give any advice as to what it's going, you know, which way to go at this point in time. I mean, the one thing I will say also is, we're expecting very shortly a hundred thousand dollars from Womiko as far as the rebate program. That money should be coming any day now. Unfortunately, that money has to go into the general fund first, it can't go to offset costs, so there are a couple of moving parts going on. It's just the fact that the bottom line is really not known at this point in time. And truthfully, this project won't close out until another year from now, by the time the MSBA does their audit, final audit of everything also. But should be a good number, like I said, speak with the OPM sometime in February or so.
Mark?
To the extent that some of the changes in payment schedules by the MSBA, excuse me, to the extent that some of the difference in what the town share is, is the result of changes in payment schedule by the MSBA, I would consider that changes that have occurred from when we passed our authorization in town until now, I'd consider that a political shift by the MSBA, and therefore potentially require a political response or political answer. Have we, or should we, as a select board, consider pursuing that with our state representatives? In other words, when we signed this agreement, we thought that item X would be reimbursed at a fifty-two percent by the state, and when we submitted it, they said, no, we changed the rules, now we only reimburse at a forty percent by the state. And some of those did, that is some of the situations that happened. You know, so, you know, the MSBA's not gonna budge, that's their new rules. But when you change the rules in the seventh inning of the game, or the fifth inning of the baseball game, we oughta be able to go back to the people who helped make the rules and say, wait a second.
We've actually, I, I spoke to Peter and Bobby about that, and they said they're not ready to know exactly where all the pieces are before a letter is written, because there's a couple of elements, and one is, they said, the, how long it's taking for reimbursement to come in, as well as the issue is the cutback in reimbursement on the town side. And they said they were looking to put together what the list was before a letter would go out. So that's in the works, from what I understand.
Marie, the, the letter you're referring to, is that a letter that would be written by Bobby Barquette and Peter Greenberg?
No, probably this board, but they would let us know what are the elements that they would need in the letter. They weren't ready to give a list yet.
By the time project closeout happens, we'll be able to drill down to a very specific number, almost to the penny, I would argue, of what we thought we were gonna get, what we actually got from the MSBA, and what areas of the building those funds were spent on, like what specific things those monies were used for. Tom Murphy, our project manager, tracks it to that little detail. And I think, Mark, to your, to answer your question, the conversations I've been a part of at the school building committee and elsewhere would lead me to conclude that all options are being kept on the table, both from a project standpoint, but also from a political standpoint. And when the timing is right, when, when that level of detail is known, and when we're not waiting on more money from the MSBA, it may be a, a better time to engage in that.
Marie?
Yes?
Can I ask a couple of questions? One is, and we talked, you mentioned, and Mark mentioned, that some of the, the percentages have changed in what the MSBA will reverse, but the reality is that a lot of that is, the, the issues that we're having are part of the project that are town-owned, meaning not the new school. It's from the new school over, which is what we own, this wing, the pool, the, the B, Business Technology Center. So my, my question is, and I like to, and I understand the project isn't over yet, but today, we have a significant dollar amount that we're in the hole on the project, and I'd like to know, and I think we just need to know what that dollar amount is. Because if I, I just, that's the question I wanna ask. We can dance around it and say, well, there's still things that gotta be done, and things have gotta be submitted, but rather than waiting six months down the road, or come February, which is five, four, five months down the road, to find out that, that number is even greater, because it seems that we're running into issues here. Now, the, the school, the school part of the building's done, the punch list on that is minimal, is what they said at the last meeting. So can you tell us what, where that number is on the school building project, or where we are?
I, I can't, I mean, I could, and I can't, I don't have it in front of me, but certainly Jocelyn Lees could lay out for you costs that were, for example, change orders, with the building we're sitting in right now, building A was a rehab. MSBA did not participate in rehab. So some additional work was done to the pool, not including the surge tank, we actually did do that work in-house, but there were drain, floor drains, I mean, there's specific amounts of work, I don't wanna bore you with details, but I could tell you all the things that were unexpected costs that were found, once you got into the building, especially the rehab portion, that we knew MSBA wasn't going to participate in. There was a change at the beginning in the reimbursement that, right off the top, was about nine hundred thousand dollars. That was an MSBA issue. Jocelyn Lees, you know, there's a certain level of site design, and it's a percentage of, a percentage of the site design is eligible for MSBA, but they applied it at a lower number, which is the initial planned number, not the actual design number, as I recall.
And I'm not a hundred percent sure.
They cap the reimbursement for site work well below what the site work ended up being, even though we, even though the team had understood that it's just a, a straight percentage. So that type of stuff, yes, Paul. In terms of the actual number, we have met several times to try and drill down into that, and again, it's this long log, so I can't really tell you what it is, and then, so I can tell you what numbers are driving the overall number, but the net number will include credits back from the contractor, possibly credits back from the architect, credits for, from like, from Womiko. I mean, there are, there are also positive credits that may be coming back, so the net number really won't be known until project closeout. And I, and I'd hate to speculate, honestly.
So, so as the town manager and the CFO, you're telling me you guys can't tell me how much we're in the hole right now in the project?
Not precisely.
We can give you a range.
Yeah, I can give you a range. But, but I don't want people.
That'd be nice, I would like a range.
Like I said, I hesitate, I'll give a disclaimer, but I hesitate to do, and this is not just for this issue. When you give a number that isn't solid, it becomes a number, and then you have to explain why that isn't the number down the line. And so I don't want to say that this, I can, I can say it's tracking at two hundred and fifty-six thousand on the work log right now, not including credits, and then there are debt issuance costs that aren't carried on Jocelyn Lees' work, work log, or risk log is what he calls it, that are part of the town share, that's, that gives you five hundred thousand, but it may not end up being that, that number.
And actually, see, you, you had left the meeting last Thursday, but we did iron out that issue with the, with the issuance cost, so the number is closer to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So again, I give you a range of two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars.
So it's not a half million?
It, it's not, there were, there was an issue that we ironed out, I think we met last Wednesday or Thursday, that we ironed out, that there was some confusion about this money that was set aside for bond issuance costs, and that amount was roughly two hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we never issued. But there is also an amount for the feasibility study of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars that is part of the overall project. Three hundred and sixty thousand dollars was the town share of the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or whatever it came out to be. Those numbers were getting, they got confused by the OPM interchangeably, but again, ironing those out last week, we are probably closer to the two to three hundred thousand dollar range.
So I leave the room, number goes down to fifty, should I?
So I, you know, again, it's plus or minus, it's, it's, things are ongoing.
You know, I think that the few, I've only been on this six months, the few who've been on this since the word go, are still ironing out some confusion in the number, so that's why I say, here's the number, here's what it is, it's, it's difficult to project that, because there is still a lot of ironing out to be done.
But in regards to what Mark said, it'd be nicer to have that letter put together sooner rather than later. I know there's a lot, people submit bills in January. If we could have some sort of, even not exact number, but some ballpark to be able to write beginning of January, end of December, that would be nice, to keep that in mind.
Okay, yeah, like I said, I would defer it up to the school building committee until they turn over the building officially as well.
Can I just ask one more question? Can you explain to me a little bit better what the confusion was over, because the, the scope of work study for seven twenty was approved way back, as I recall, before the project started. And the bond issuance costs, can you, can you tell me where?
Where the confusion was?
Where, where the owner's project manager might. Where, where the owners, project manager might think it's their money versus the town's money?
Well, I don't think it was that. I, I think it was, when the town made, the town made the original bond issuance of seventy-eight million dollars. Of that seventy-eight million dollars, there was going to be a share that was the state of about thirty-four million, and the town's share, I believe, was forty-four million, I'll just round this off, to forty-four million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, let's say. Two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of the forty-four million, three hundred and sixty was the bond issuance cost. We, we never incurred any bond issuance costs, because we always got bond premiums. The town actually borrowed forty-four million dollar, one hundred thousand, okay? That was for the construction portion of the project. Prior to that, there was the feasibility study. The feasibility study was, again, I'm going to say seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the town share was estimated at three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So, when the, the OPM utilized the numbers, he took the, the forty-four one plus the three hundred and sixty for the feasibility, so it was forty-four, four something. And then we got into this discussion about, we still had this two hundred and sixty thousand dollars amount available, let's say, that we said to the town, we were going to borrow forty-four, three sixty. We never did. So, there was confusion as to how much actually the town borrowed, and how much it should have been borrowed, or how much we potentially said we were going to borrow. And then the actual number that came out was, what he was actually using, forty-four million, four hundred and sixty, which is the forty-four one that we actually borrowed, and the three hundred and sixty for the feasibility, that was the actual number that we borrowed, that was the actual number that he was using. We had thought that he was using the forty-four million, three hundred and sixty, which had the two hundred and sixty thousand, which we didn't borrow, and said, no, we never borrowed that. So, that's how we, the additional quarter of a million dollars came about. We never borrowed that. But he, again, he was using the correct numbers. We got confused in talking about the three sixty versus the two sixty.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, I just wanted to say some of the things that I found out this week. I attended, or the past few weeks, the COA meeting, and they put together a task force within the COA to look at rehabbing further changes at the senior center or building a new senior center. So, they're starting to do some planning on what the current needs are and what they might be wanting to do. In regards to the planning board, the bylaw that's on the warrant currently, on the-
Accessory-
Accessory-
Or bylaw?
Bylaw, is, the planning board did not support it. And the housing authority is going back to look at what they're doing, if they're going to keep it on the warrant. So, that's what happened in planning board. The finance committee asked me to mention that, moving ahead on the GFOA, there is a, a meeting throughout the state of finance committees. And they're going to be attending that, and I think reporting on what they hear, but they say it's a very good meeting and encouraged any of us who wanted to attend. And in regards to that, Richard and I did attend the selectmen's regional, wasn't regional meeting, it was fall meeting.
I used to fall meeting.
Yeah, and it was excellent. I attended the section on town manager evaluation and also on legislation. And one of the things that, and also, there was a wonderful presentation by the superintendent of police and also the police chief that handled the bombing, the marathon bombing. And the two takeaways I got from the meeting, one was that the, these regional emergency tabletops, well, it was beyond tabletops, were really vital, that they had done, it was called Urban Shield, before the event had even occurred. And then on the legislative end, Andover has, four times a year, they have a legislative select committee meetings where they invite school, finance, and select board, and they meet with their delegation to go over things that they want. And I thought the four, the four-time meeting is, was an excellent idea. So, that's what I came away with. Richard, was there anything you wanted to add?
Oh, there was, there was too many small points, but it, it a little filter in there. There was excellent presentations.
And, and the last two things I wanted to mention, one is the high school students that had done that tour of the high school, it has been placed on the website, and I was going to sit down with them and talk to them about other projects that they could do for us also. And Wounded Warrior is coming up November ninth, and where, there's going to be corporate sponsorships, as well as individual runners or contributions. It's going to be a wonderful day for the town. Richard is very involved with planning and supporting the project and attending the, the meetings, but it really is wonderful, as many people that could get together and businesses to support it. I'm very excited about the Wounded Warrior project. Is there anything you wanted to mention about it?
There was one thing I wanted to mention, that Marie and I chatted coming back, and the one thing that strikes me is that, I, I've talked to a lot of people on state level, and they've got a lot of programs they use at state level for facility management, for asset management, budget, and whatever. And it dawns, I mean, that the MMA is not doing anything for the municipalities to bring them all together, to take a leadership role in putting on computer programs, forensics, or, or asset management programs, or any program. And they're just kind of avoid, and I, and Marie and I were chatting, and I said, I would certainly think it's time for us to challenge them and say, why aren't you doing this for all the municipalities in the state? I mean, the state is doing it, and the state will not share their databases, or their systems, because it's for state facilities. And then we drop down to municipal level, and we're sitting, every community's reinventing the wheel, which seems highly inappropriate since we are all members of the MMA. So, it's, it's a future knockout there. I, I really think we need to aggressively approach them on that, and see if they can get some support going. I think, I think we could get a lot of communities to support that energy.
That's a good idea.
Just follow through, that's all we need.
Okay, Richard, I mean, Stephen, did you want to do your town manager reports?
Sure. I will try and be brief. Pursuant to my contract, if I want to renew my, to have a membership in the International City Managers Association, which is my professional trade association, I need approval from the select board. Cost of my dues is eight hundred and forty dollars for the year. I, I had been a member for four years through my, through being city administrator in Lancaster. I found it very beneficial to me professionally, you know, from a networking standpoint, I felt it helped me a bit, helped, gave me tools to be a better municipal administrator each year. The membership benefits, I did attach for the board, so I'd like an offensive vote or consensus, or I'd like to be able to renew my membership, please.
Well, I think, when I attended that MMA thing, they talked about the ICMA, and in fact, there's a certification process, and the town manager at Lexington was saying how wonderful it is, and they even have what's called three sixty reviews that are part of the certification process, and he was saying what, it's really invaluable for him. So, I support you being a member.
Sort of being, there's a, it's a CM, ICMA CM is, you know, it's the credential of International City Managers Association, I've been certified manager. I think that there's a lot of continuing in that goes into, which I would love, but it requires the managers to go to the conference every year, and that's not really built in my contract either.
Well, we'll look into that. Al?
You know, in the, this is a technical issue, but I wasn't able to open the file that says ICMA renewal. So, I don't know-
I did.
It's a PDF. It's a different kind of PDF, as I often-
Oh, it's a TIF, you know, it's a TIF, yep. And I, it's a user error. I, I thought the scanner defaulted to PDF, and I scanned it, and it's, it's, it's an image. So, it's just, it's just a sign-up sheet and a thing from the website saying the membership benefits.
It's an observation iPad opens it.
Okay.
It's an observation iPad opens it.
The dues are based on-
Did you open it?
Oh, yeah, it opens fine, the iPad. I just can't open other documents.
The dues are a formula based on compensation.
I'm going to approve the dues for the ICMA membership.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, moving right along to the budget schedule and directives. There's a draft timeline prepared by CFO, Mr. Pesterzic, for your review. I haven't distributed it, because, you know, I went over it today, but going back to a comment made by Chair a few moments ago, I do have an outline that Paul has put together in terms of our kind of game plan for, for doing the budget this year in accordance with GFOA, and outlining, you know, as we, as we construct this budget document, what things have to be in there for GFOA, what things are recommended. So, I just want to, I'm not going to go through it here, but we are starting from the very beginning of the budget process with the GFOA framework, so I, I think it'll lead to a good outcome in that regard.
Will you be sending that to us?
I can, sure.
Yeah, I'll send it electronic. A budget calendar?
No.
No, no, the GFOA-
Schedule.
Thing. And he also put together kind of a table, a draft table of contents. I think, we'd always felt that when we organized our budget document into a table of contents like GFOA, it would, it would show that we're doing quite a bit of what's required already, which I think it has. So, I guess I'll open it to the board for the, to look at the schedule and defer to Paul for any comments.
All right.
Let's see what's good from October seventh. Marie?
Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, Richard.
Yeah, I had one, I may have more comments, but I did have one comment. I know it's January sixth, you've got a select board meeting of capital planning. That, I think, is quite early for that group to be able to get everything done and get it finalized in a report and be able to brief the select board. I think it's, seems like it was, what, end of January mostly, Mark?
Yeah, but Richard, I didn't see that as the final report of the capital planning, but rather prior to the, to their deliberations, because if you recall, last year, we had a disconnect, and so I thought, and I read this, it made sense to do it before their deliberations, and then they report to us sometime in February, you know, as part of a select board meeting, not part of the budget process.
Okay.
So, if that's, if that's, now, I don't know what that meant by January sixth, but you're right.
It's just meant for review, it was just a, for them to give you folks an update. It's not their final report.
Okay, yeah, there's no way they're going to have a final report January sixth, so if that's-
Okay, when does the final report do then?
The final report usually comes in, in February. I don't know if I have a date here, but it's usually given to you folks in February sometime. I could certainly put it in for-
Yeah, it's not in here for February.
Yeah, but no, the January sixth date was just a conversation-
Okay.
Between the boards.
Okay. I, I thought that was the final report, because that, that was early.
We probably want to add the final date in there.
Mid-February for capital planning?
It gives them something to shoot for, I mean, they're-
Okay.
Yeah, mid to late February.
Marie, can I, Paul, are these dates per charter, or are they just arbitrary?
They're not necessarily arbitrary, they're, they're meant to address what is in the charter, and some of them are ahead of the schedule. The charter dates are mentioned, as an example, on the top of page two. Adopted school budget to town manager, those in there. March fourteenth is the proposed date that the town manager should be given at the latest as, as the budget to you folks. So, those dates are in here, but this, this is ahead of those charter dates.
Okay, and that's what I, so my recommendation to the board would be to adopt the charter dates, because I've been on this board for eight years, and I know that the school committee has always asked for a little bit more time in putting their, their budget together, so, you know, sizable, they have to take into consideration school, that's special ed and so forth, and we've always seemed to revert right back to the charter dates. And I know we like to set goals and say, here's where we're going to meet, but I think realistically, if you're going to change one date in here, you end up changing the whole calendar.
If I may add, I've checked this date out with the, with the school business manager, February fourteenth. So, that was his Valentine's Day gift to the town manager.
I, I know that we've done that in the past as well, and, okay, I-
Let's give it a try. Yes?
Now, last October, as I recall, there was a decision by this board to make the budget directive, and there was a decision of a zero budget.
Zero dollar increase.
Right, okay, however you want to refer to it.
No, that's how it was, zero dollar increase.
Okay, no, I understand. I, I wasn't trying to be pejorative, I was just searching for the term. So, where, where does that decision fit into this timeline, or that type of decision?
Actually, the, the budget directives is a whole nother document that I did not even prepare until you folks, if I understood correctly, were going to meet with the school committee, have some dialogue, so the budget, completely separate. It's a completely separate issue, it's not even on here. These are only the dates that are being set. Has nothing to do with the directives at this point in time.
Alex, November fourth, if you read, it says, Final FY 2015 Budget Instructions and Budget Calendar Adopted. That's, that refers to what, the equivalent of what was done last year.
Okay, so, November fourth is when we're going to be making this decision, this similar decision, is going to be a level service, level funded, zero dollar-
Right, it's the budget directive, may not be that simple.
Right.
Okay.
To be determined, I guess.
All right.
I have one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Richard?
It's back on capital again. Do you know when the capital plan will be given to capital planning?
It's being worked on. I have fire departments, I think the EPW is still working on theirs. And my hope for this year was to convert the power, or excuse me, Excel-based capital plan into more of a PowerPoint presentation-friendly plan. And I was hoping to do that before it goes to capital planning committee, but I would, I've been looking for some work study help, that's how we do that, and I haven't gotten assigned anybody yet. So, it's possible that one of those things is going to give.
Okay, because I know their, their schedule gets quite aggressive, and, and they're going right into the holidays, so early instead of later is always better with those guys.
We're doing the best we can.
Yeah, real early.
Are you thinking of November, December, would it, just roughly, what are you aiming for?
I think when we discussed it, we talked about mid-November.
Mid to late November.
Mid to late November, yeah.
That, that's really pushing it, guys, because then you're, then you're talking-
Some people that do the capital planning also do looking at traffic studies for casinos, also do the field service.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just telling you, for a committee, you're putting them into November, you're, you're going to have them meeting every week in December, and that's holiday periods. And then briefing the select board early January, you're not giving them a lot of time. Plus the fact, my feelings are that this capital plan should be something that just goes click, 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 and comes out. This is not, we should have a back, background that this is a flipover. It's not a major invention each year, it's, it should be already back there, and we just refresh and put it out.
Well, I think, I think they do verify costs and things like that, but that does take some level of effort. They, they said, we've, we've pressed them for it, but it's, as you know, we don't, it's the same human beings doing a whole bunch of other stuff right now.
Okay. The EPW operation consultant, did you want to tell us where you are?
Yes, we did meet on that.
Bless you, bless you. That was on camera.
Did it actually land on the camera?
Yeah.
As, as Mike and his team and I have kind of gone through this, we've, you know, we had a draft RFP that we'd gotten from Andover, kind of converted it to fit town long metal, and then we've been going over some of the content. And some of the questions we've had about things that should be in here, the goal of the study, you know, what things we want to look at, it's, you know, yielded a discussion about, geez, you know, one of the division heads had drafted a mission statement for the department. And we thought, well, that'd be good to include in this, to notify the consultant, here's, you know, the mission statement kind of as a, you know, introductory thing. And then we said, well, the, really hasn't been adopted by the department, and that turned into a broader discussion about, we really ought to meet with the department as a whole to talk about what we're doing here, why we're doing it, what we hope to get out of it, discuss the mission statement, really make it a collaborative, so that they don't read about it in the paper, so people actually are down there doing the work, know what's happening and why we're doing it, and to hear it directly from their leadership as well as the town manager. So, the next step in the process is we have, we're, we're making our final edits to the RFP, I'll happily distribute that for review to the select board, and then we're going to be scheduling a time for me to meet with the entire department and kind of go over what we're, we're doing. So, in terms of when's it going to be advertised for consultants, I would say within the next thirty days.
Any questions?
Yeah, when do you anticipate having the draft out?
Next, next week or so.
All right, regionalization, you want to tell us what you've been doing?
Sure. Sure. At the, really at the, at the leadership of Police Chief Siano, one of the things that's been talked about in the past, and there was a study done, was regionalization of dispatch centers or what are called public safety answering points, PSEs, 9/11, 911 call centers. And the issue's been talked about a lot. And I think each community's trying to find the right partners that fit its profile in terms of how they police, how they answer calls, things like that. And the towns of Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, Wilbraham, and Hampden, I think the chiefs of those communities have gotten together and decided that, that those four communities would be a good partnership to establish a shared dispatch center. And there are a couple of pieces in place here that I allude to in my memo that are, that make this kind of the right time for it. And so we're gonna keep working together as a group, the four communities, exploring options. We're gonna look at a recently, a shared, a similar facility in the Devins area with Harvard and Shirley and I think Air and another community that are really kind of similar to us and see how they, how, how they got launched, you know, what they've learned so far. And a continuing, ongoing dialogue with the state 9/11 department that will be funding most of this, both from a, you know, establishing the center, but also operating going forward. There's a lot of, there's a recurring funding stream through a 75 cent surcharge on, I think, mobile phones that funds the state's efforts so that the funding isn't just one-time grant funding. It's constructing and then ongoing operation. So I'm excited about these talks. I think we, you know, certainly we want to look for ways for cost savings. What we've learned about how dispatch, how technical dispatch is getting and how that as a field is growing even more technical with more duties being assigned to it, we feel that in concept, a higher level of service can be provided for something like, like a shared center. So I'm hoping that this will pan out and be a cost savings to the town.
Can I ask a question? A couple of years ago, at a regional selectman's meeting, that was Halloween Summit, and I think you were there.
I was there too.
Yeah, where they talked about, it was a police chief of Wilbraham, maybe a year and a half or two years or whatever it was. Is this a continuation of that? Or, because at that point in time, he seemed like he was really close to, you know, getting a group of towns set to set that up. Is this a continuation of that or is it something brand new?
This is, I'd say brand new. This issue's been talked about for so long, from my understanding, that it really is a brand new. But there is another group, Palmer, a few communities, including, surrounding Palmer, are doing their own effort on this. And for whatever reason, I think maybe it was Wilbraham or, I guess it could've been Wilbraham, was originally a part of that. They're not now. They feel like they'd be a better fit with us. I didn't want to get into the reasons. I don't know if I understand the cultures of the communities yet well enough to say. But this is an effort that really is getting going right now. But I do think, one of the things I heard at a recent regionalization conference that I went to in Holy Cross was, the reason why regional dispatches are usually so tough to get to, you know, in terms of developing them, is because of certain, you know, some departments not really wanting to change, don't want to give up any kind of authority or share resources or anything like that. And the four towns right now are really showing the willingness to be open to doing all of that, which really is the first big hurdle towards advancing this. So I'm optimistic about it. And I think it's gonna be a great win for all four communities.
Has any, any of this been formalized?
No.
Okay. I mean, when are they going to formalize this? Maybe an MOU or something and really get this going?
I think we want to learn more about how, learn more about how these structures operate. There are questions of, to answer your question, there are certain, there are different ways to structure. You can have a freestanding entity that everybody contracts with. You can have one town host it and we pay the town. You can have an independent authority. I mean, there's different ways to do it. I think we want to explore what the best way to do it is and have an MOU kind of convey some of those basic, you know, big-scale questions. Where's it gonna be located? How's it gonna operate? And then, once we have an MOU signed, we can kind of fill in the details. But right now, except right now we've had really one meeting about it and.
But it's been going on for some time though, hasn't it?
Not, not the four towns.
Well, I thought the chiefs had been, you said they'd been discussing.
Yeah, but I, I think it's, you know, they've, I'm sure talked about it many, many times. But in terms of, hey, let's the four of us get together and push this thing, that's within the last 45 days.
Okay, well, let me ask you something real quick. And I know you said the next step's go look at the thing and that's fine. But what's the next step after that? I mean, is this, is this thing on any type of schedule? Who's gonna drive this effort?
I think that we're gonna tease that out in discussions. Ultimately, I think the person, the, the town that hosts it will probably drive a lot of it. If they have to build a new facility, there's obviously the, the process to get, to build a new facility is much, you know, the biggest part of all this. And so that town will drive it. And which town that is, you know, we have some idea of where that could end up. But right now, like you said, it's all just.
Well, you said Wilbraham's on tap to build a new facility? How, what's the, what's the forecast on that? What's the date?
I think they're looking for in the next year or so.
Okay, so it's, is it under design now? Have they got the money?
Yeah, I mean, I think I say here as well, you know, we wouldn't really be looking, we'd be looking for a fiscal year 15, you know, date to, to apply for grants to do more in-depth studies. So this is really.
Okay, so you're really talking way out.
We're preliminary.
Okay.
But it's, it's important to solidify the commitment and the relationship to do what you just said, like an MOA.
Right.
In advance of that. So we're ready to pursue, you know, grants and do real meaningful planning.
Yeah. And also, these funds have ways of drying up too.
Yeah, I think that, I think the benefit of the, of the state 9/11 department is that those funds are recurring.
Yeah, no, I mean, generally programmed thrusts and changes, so.
Richard, I just thought, a comment, when I first came on the board, the very first month, the, you know, Governor Patrick at that time said, and he's used this example a lot of times, the state of California has five dispatch centers and Massachusetts has 351.
Yeah.
And the state has been doing everything they can to force that consolidation. And you saw it just a couple of years, a year and a half ago or so with the requirement for emergency medical dispatch training. So you couldn't have a, a 911 police officer. And this came up during our negotiations. They have now upped the ante, if you will, of what they're requiring for training and what they're requiring for specific knowledge and skills for being a 911 dispatcher, somebody who answers 911. So the state is strongly pushing this. And I think as long as they push it, they're probably gonna come up with funds for the consolidation, I guess.
Yeah.
Sounds like it's a, it's a, it's an area of interest by the.
Yeah. And my thoughts would be to push this thing hard and get it, because there, there is savings here.
No, just don't, you can't go into it for savings for the town of Long Meadow. We have a, a long history of somebody being in our police department reception area for people to walk in. Apparently, it has used an extensive amount of, you know, day and night, weekends and whatever. And, you know, to end up not having that would be a change for the town of Long Meadow. Now, we can do that or we can set up, you know, the, literally a, a computer screen with a button push here to ask a question. And you're gonna get somebody in whoever they are, wherever they are, answering questions. But.
India.
Wilbraham.
Whatever.
Wilbraham.
Same thing. But, but I think that making that change is not as straightforward and certainly may not be a cost savings. It may be an efficiency savings, not a cost.
Well, a level of service.
Right.
Yes.
I'd like to ask, 'cause that was, I was gonna mention it, I've marked it, and I'd like to see a future agenda item where have a discussion as a board with the police chief of what that front door looks like if we go to regional dispatch. Because to Mark's point, I don't think you're gonna have a savings. Because if you, if we do want to man that, you're gonna man it with a police officer, which is gonna cost you more than what the cost of a dispatcher is. At least I think it is. But I, I'd really like to have that conversation before we direct our, our chief into something that maybe the board does or doesn't want to do. And I, I just think that would be fair to him, that we have that discussion of what does it look like? Because if we all of a sudden say we're gonna save $50,000 a year by going into a regional dispatch, and we say, great, go do it, and there's another shutter on it like it is, there is on the, on the office side, then we're gonna get some pushback from citizens. And we might not like that either, whether it's shuttered or not. So I think we need to really understand what the regional dispatch means to that station.
Yes.
Now, it sounds like there's some history behind this issue with the board. I mean, I've heard this discussed in recent years. I mean, the way it's sort of being presented to us is that, you know, we're, you know, this movement is acquiring some momentum. And, I mean, it does strike me that we might want to have a general discussion about whether we're ultimately in favor of it. I mean, I, I don't know where I would stand on it. I haven't studied enough. It sounds like you, Richard, have looked at this and you're pretty enthusiastic about it. But I think it would be useful to sort of see if, because I guess before we start pushing, you know, before it acquires a momentum of its own and we start leading these other towns on to, to think that we really are on board when we haven't really made that decision, I think it would make sense for us to, to do that, is Paul was saying.
Well, as I noted, there's the next round of grants to do the studying to really answer a lot of technical questions isn't till fiscal year 15, it's the next year. I mean, if we want to debate and arrive at an opinion on it without getting those technical studies, then, I mean, I guess you could. I, I'd like to know what it actually means in terms of what types of radios can they, is there, can there be interconnectivity, the kind of things that really matter for this thing to work. So I guess I, I'm just giving this information 'cause it's something we're working on. But if we wanted to decide not to do it now, I mean.
No, we'll, we'll look and see what agenda in the future. We can talk about it.
Okay.
We're not going into a depth today, yeah.
There's a lot of strengths to regionalization for long-term dispatch.
Yeah. I, we already did capital planning.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Did the governor ever release chapter 90 funds?
Only half.
Okay, so, so, and we have not, we have not authorized the projects for the half where we haven't gotten the money yet, I presume?
We have not.
Yeah.
Fire department grant surplus? Mark had a question.
Mark requested that. I haven't, I don't know if you have another question.
Yeah.
Okay, health insurance update?
I just, with the national news being what it is and, you know, confusion or uncertainty about the implementation of the Affordable Care Act, I thought I would just give you some information about what we've done with our, you know, to notify our employees in compliance with that and, but, you know, just some local impact, which really isn't very much. The other part is, you know, Paul actually submitted a memo to me that I have in your packet, your information about Scantic Valley, if you want him to go into. It basically is Scantic Valley made some administrative decisions about plan design that are gonna yield, I would say, pretty significant cost savings, both in the short and long term. It is detailed in the memo if you want further details. You can ask.
And I'd just like to comment that Marie put a lot of effort into that early on last year. And part of the driving force behind Scantic Valley is, so I think you deserve some recognition.
Way to whip those eggs.
Yeah, the egg whips.
The acronym is Egg Whip. But the plan they changed to its big cost savings. And Marie had been advocating for that for quite some time.
The Williams Road project?
Yes, I would just give you, to give the, a select board a brief update. The work has been going along steadily. I was out there today and I believe all of the taps for the domestic water services for those homes on Merryweather are in. Some of the services were actually connected. He did pass his pressure and chlorine tests. One of the things we, you know, we, and it's been talked about at the board about means and methods. And once you sign the contract, the contractor owns the site and can proceed on the work in the way the contractor sees fit. And you run the risk of incurring change orders or incurring liability for dictating means and methods. We met, you know, we still meet weekly. The DPW team and I meet weekly to go over the job. And we decided that, you know, work was starting to progress down William Street. And we felt that the higher priority should be getting the, I think, six homes or eight homes that are on, that have been on temporary water service for quite some time, back onto their permanent water service and get Merryweather Road repaved as soon as possible because the people in that neighborhood have been really disproportionately affected by the, the goings-on. Not the least of which is the, the lack of a, a good staging area to store materials. That's when, when people see pipes on the street, there really isn't a close-by staging area to store that. And, you know, it's important to have that equipment there. That way, the job will get done faster 'cause you're not going back and forth to get equipment or material. We went out and spoke to the contractor and said, it's your job, but our, we would really like to see you focus on Merryweather, getting that put back together and getting people off temporary water service as a priority. He agreed and has spent his focus and energy doing that the last couple of weeks. I would say in the next couple of days, the water services will all be restored. And I believe paving will be weather permitting and site conditions permitting possibly next week.
Okay.
And then, and then they will resume going down William Street.
Mark?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. When the project started, one of the things we tried to commit to was using our, I don't know if Blackboard connects the right number, but our reverse 911 system to better inform people. It was done once, but given the fact that, I gotta tell you, I didn't even realize what was holding this up, freight houses. Clearly, those people didn't realize it based on phone calls I've gotten. I think we need to communicate to those people better. As you said, it's just a, it, it's not a pleasant place. You can't drive through there, especially at night after the rain. You know, I, I've mentioned to you before, Stephen, I think we, we, methods and materials or methods means notwithstanding, it is our decision whether that road is open or closed at night. There have been nights, there have been weekends where that road should not have been open. It was a danger. It wasn't just a hazard, it was a danger. With, by us opening the roads, I think we were opening the town to liability. There's something happening. And the contractor can say we're not ready, fine, close the road. There's other ways around there. But when you leave the road open and it's pitch black at night, people are gonna go down the road not knowing what they're going to. I think whoever represents the town on that project ought to be the one who has the final say. And they ought to be erring on the side of safety. Because clearly, I've had, I've sent emails, I've asked you to drive through it. There was a weekend, there have been nights that it just is not passable and shouldn't, shouldn't be open. And I think, again, the communications, you know, the fact that we've been waiting two weeks or whatever, you know, the people who live there have seen the earlier stages. They got literally grass growing in those houses. The first eight houses are back to normal, you know? And these people are saying, what's going on here? Why have they given up on us? And they don't know. And I think that communication is, you know, we need to, if we've got the systems and we've agreed to use them, let's use them. I think that's, that's the biggest thing. The other thing I just commented on is, is I'm disappointed to see that the contractor is using the original outfall area as a, as a dumping area. There is now tree trunks, torn-up asphalt, and, you know, we wouldn't allow our folks to dump in there. And I don't think we should allow the contractor to dump in there. It looks disgusting that, that they're using the outfall area as a general dump. And, and that's exactly, if it's done, it's done. They shouldn't be dumping in there. I know you're probably not even aware of it.
I'm, I'm not, but I, I guess I would say it's staging, not dumping.
Well, the, the place is totally done. And they got dump trucks dumping trash and dumping, you know, everything they're picking up is dumping there. Why are they dumping it there? We got a huge DPW yard if they want to stage stuff. You know, let them stage stuff down in DPW.
Mark, is this, is this like where the, where the outfall really is?
Where the outfall is, if you go down Captain Road, right, right opposite Captain Road, Richard, you've probably seen it.
I see it every day.
Yeah, you know, they're just dumping.
But there's got to be some environmental issues that we.
Well, they're dumping and then they come back in. They're not dumping at the actual outlet. They're dumping beside it, right, Mark? Yeah. And then they come in every week or so with a loader and they scoop everything up and take it. So they're using it as a temporary dump site. Asphalt, concrete. Because I, I also had some concerns that they were burying materials. And I brought that up to the town engineer. I want to make sure we weren't burying asphalt in there. So. But they're using it for a staging area, Mark, for disposal.
It just seems to me there's other questions.
It looks bad.
Yeah, thank you.
It looks very bad. I, I have stopped commenting on the road. I, I don't even use it anymore because I like to keep my blood pressure under control. But I totally agree with what you said. There are many nights when that road should have been closed. It was not safe. If there was any fog in there, there was no safety lights, there's no erosion control. We could have had a major problem on that road.
I, the road was kept open as a courtesy to residents. And, you know, part of the reason why it's all torn up is they were backfilling, excavating for different stages of the work. And it's, it's a tough, tough job. It's in a narrow site. Again, no staging. And so I think it's been, I think it's gone as well as it, as it can under the circumstances. And certainly, it's gotten a high level of attention from me as well. attention from me as well as the rest of the department, but it's not going perfect. And quite honestly, we want the work done as fast as possible. We want it done as cheaply as possible and mandating a lot of additional requirements and raising standards takes longer and costs more. And we are fine to do that, but we will have that discussion in capital planning in a bunch of time.
But just so everybody knows, we budgeted $955,000 for the project. The town was happy to pay 955 and now we've got a bid that's substantially lower than that, 755,000 or 715 or something like that.
Correct.
And rather than say we're going to do it right up to the level that the town's people authorized, we're going to say, "Let's cheap out." I got to tell you, there's signs that are made, they say, "Closed to through traffic, residents only." We haven't, you know, I understand, residents want to get in there, that's fine, but people are going through there and then going ballistic when they're losing a tie rod or a tire because that's what was going on. All I'm saying is that there are ways to do it and then there are ways to do it. And to say, "We want to do it the cheapest way," you get the cheapest way. We were willing to pay 955. If it costs a few more bucks, then we ought to do it to make sure that residents of Long Meadow are acceptable to them.
I don't think it'll cost anymore. Looking to closing it more at night until we're talking about one more week and that paving will be done. And the communications, I think, is a great idea.
The people want to say, not only are field persons there all day, every day, but also the water utility personnel, they communicate with the people in the work area on almost daily basis.
I think another 911 maybe to encourage people not to use the site. We're coming up to paving in a week. I mean, that was great news. I was happy to hear it, but I'm sure a lot of residents would want to hear this information of what's going on and not just the people on that street.
Steve, you talked about, you know, in the contract that if you ask, the way it's bid it out, that if you ask for other things, it's considered like a change order or so. And you pay for those. That's whatever, you know, here we talked about the high school having a change order and so forth. I just would hope that the lesson for the next project is that that doesn't become a change order, it becomes a standard. And that's all I want to say is that, you know, I hope that the foresight is that we have measures in the contract or standards in the contract that say, when you're off that street, you know, we get, the goal is to get people off of the, we know they're going to be on temporary water. So the goal is to get them off of temporary water as soon as possible, not at the contractor's purview, but at the town's. So, you know, I have, there's a couple of different things that, you know, Mark talked about the bid and being $200,000 less and it's not the only project that we've had that's come in way under bid. And I think we have, when we're putting projects together, and I know we're going to go through capital plan and I think we're having some issues as to true estimates because that's money that's tied up and could have been used for other projects. And I know it can get returned to capital planning, but the issue is that money was used up this year for projects that also could have been completed.
It was a bond. I don't know if we bonded it yet or not.
I think it actually came from three sources.
You know, so my only point is, is that I think, going forward, I think we need to kind of keep a little sharper pencil on it, but I just, I would hope that, you know, going forward, that we've seen kind of a mess that's out there and some of it's to be expected, but other parts of it. I drive by there every day and I do that on purpose and I think we need to start charging those residents for having beachfront property.
Yeah.
Because they've had so much sand in front of their house that I just think it's not even a street anymore, so...
I'm going to have to move on because we're running out of time. The, in the green communities is really important because we're coming up to a deadline and there's two items we still need to complete by October 21st, is it?
Yeah, October 30th is the deadline, but we'll need some votes by the Select Board on October 30, 21st of the next meeting to comply with the October 30th deadline. And the one that's in here now is a draft fuel-efficient vehicle policy. The other item is the Energy Reduction Plan, the ERP. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is the, is really our consultant on this and they've been helping us assemble data and they will help us develop an ERP. And I will say that when I put this in the packet, I was pretty pessimistic about our ability to meet this deadline because I have some concerns about how this is evolving, but I did meet with PVPC today and feel much better about how this, some questions I had, I think, really were answered to my satisfaction. The fuel-efficient vehicle policy is a requirement of the state to be ordained a green community and the benefit of being a green community is that you are eligible for $135,000 a year in incentives to do energy efficiency improvements. One of the things that is not an eligible improvement is purchasing vehicles, but if you want, if you purchase, if you're going to purchase, say for example, a Honda Civic for the town engineer and you wanted to make it a higher boot to really beef up your miles per gallon, then the difference between the standard model and the hybrid model is an eligible expense for the state money. And so, and basically the other thing is, you adopt the policy, I mean, one of the things I was stuck on was you won't, you cannot hand down or repurpose Crown Victorias anymore. And we do that. We repurpose police vehicles into the fleet. They only get about 5,000 miles on them a year. The payback, even on the savings of gas, was so long that I was really struggling with it, but as it was pointed out to me, you do it because they're going to give you $135,000 you could spend elsewhere. And we, you know, every year, we try and make energy improvements to our buildings and we really have started to draw our consumption and so a lot of the things we've already been doing can now be paid for out of the money that we would get from the state and then, so we have a net gain even if we are spending money on vehicles. And I did look at our capital plan, the existing capital plan, and some of the vehicles are already in line for replacement, so it really would just be, instead of taking a Crown Vic, it would be going and getting a fuel-efficient vehicle.
But you could use a Crown Vic if it had the mileage. It just doesn't meet the mileage parameters.
It does not meet the mileage parameters.
Okay, that's the only reason.
That's the only reason.
Okay, well, I just wanted everybody to be aware, it's not so much Crown Vics that they don't fit the formula.
I mean, the state does say specifically, no Crown Vic.
Yeah, no Crown Vic, yeah.
But it is because of the mileage. I included in the packet, the draft vehicle replacement plan, there's kind of a goofy formula on the back. Some towns have just put specific targets for gas mileage depending on whether it's two-wheel drive, all-wheel drive, four doors, two doors, light-duty truck, and so I think that's probably a better way for us to go. I put our vehicle inventory as well. I sorted it by exempt in the topic cutoff, I apologize for that, NE is not exempt, meaning the 13 vehicles you see there would be subject to the policy. Everything else is exempt, you know, heavy-duty trucks, police, you know, interceptor vehicles, which they don't make a fuel-efficient version and they accept, they acknowledge that. So we're not talking about a whole lot of vehicles and like I said, you can't be a green community without it. And so I would encourage the Select Board to approve the policy or at least be open to it next month or next week.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest now that we've just seen it for the first time that we get a chance to look it over, suggest changes to the town manager and the chair and then bring it up for a vote at the next meeting.
Go first.
I would encourage you, if you have any questions in between now and the 21st, call me directly and we can go over it. I can relay in a much more full way the discussions I've had back and forth with the state on this policy.
Then I'm a little confused. I thought we were having to get cars now. This is just, we need to only get the policies in place.
Correct.
All right, I misunderstood.
Okay.
Okay.
But we have two Crown Victorias that are about ready to come out of service that we could repurpose and we would not be allowed to do that, but we would gain energy efficiency. I mean, the other thing is, it's a big deal here because it's all local miles. It's all, you know, a car will get 15, you know, local or city.
Yeah.
And 23 highway. All we get is the, you know, 15. So, I mean, it's a big deal.
Well, I sent the thing to you about the grants if you want to get boats throughout town.
Yes, yeah. And that's something we could certainly build towards. I mean, like I said, there are vehicles, some of these vehicles that are the non-exempt vehicles are already built into our existing capital plan. I did see that. And we can certainly make, the numbers that are plugged in are sufficient to get a fuel-efficient vehicle. I did have discussions with everyone that has one of these vehicles and they can, they can have any kind of car, you know, it's, I mean, or we could move to a stipend for using our own vehicles. I mean, it's, there are different ways to do it, but I feel like with all the other benefits of being a green community, this is worth doing. I want to say 111 communities in the Commonwealth have adopted this policy, so it makes sense. And I, before we can move on, I do want to commend David Miller for his assistance, volunteer assistance in helping codify the vehicle inventory in a format approved by the state.
Oh, wonderful. Yes, thank you. Any further questions?
I have one question, Ray. Did you mention something about this firefighter grant surplus? Mark Gold had some comments or something?
No, I'll tell you what happens, Richard. In last, when you were here, the pack we got for the last meeting, there was a monthly report by Eric Madison and the only comment was excess, got approval from FEMA to use excess grant, or excess FEMA funds for department equipment or something. And my comment to him was, which FEMA funds was it? Was it the October storm FEMA funds? And this clarifies, no, it was an actual grant that the fire department submitted for certain equipment. They estimated it would cost $75,000. Apparently the equipment costs less than $75,000. They said to FEMA, "You want the rest of the money back?" They said, "No, go buy more equipment with the $75,000." So that was what, I wasn't sure of what FEMA funds it was in this answer.
Yeah. The only, the only comment that I had on it, and it's a very small comment, and it's one of those long-range things that it's wonderful that they had money left over, but if, did they in fact, is any of the stuff that they purchased above and beyond capital equipment?
I don't know that, they didn't, none of them strike me. They all struck me as like materials, not capital.
Well, there's a thermal imager, there's self, there's a rescue saw, there's a vehicle stabilizer.
We have another one with $10,000 or something.
Well, I was wondering because that comes in on our capital program then, so it's a consideration that we should be thinking about because, you know, it's like going to used car dealers and buying a bunch of vehicles, then you want to replace them five years later. So that was my only comment.
Can I just, one small, tiny comment too, because the estimate, the reason why there was a surplus was the estimate to purchase equipment was less. And I want to go back to the comment you made about the bidding, that Paul made about the bidding. I agree, but when you have to budget ahead of time and then everything's kind of locked into the year unless you go for a transfer, they put it to get these cost estimates, cost estimates in the most conservative way possible because it's always better to have the bids come back less than your estimate. If it goes the other way, it's a huge problem and you won't get to do the work because you won't have the money in hand because you didn't budget enough. So, because a lot of projects is, you know, a million-dollar project is a million-dollar project. If you budget a million, it comes in 1.2. A lot of times you can't say, "Well, what can I get for a million?" Because it's a whole bunch of work tied together. So I just want to say that it's better that it's happening that way and not the other.
Right, but that's a 20% plus variance, Stephen. There's not a business in the world that runs with 20% variances on their contracts that they bid out. I would hope that, because we're trusting these individuals, our professionals to come back with that. And if you look at the total scope of projects that are, that have been sent out for bid and bid upon, there's a lot of money that's been, that's sitting there now that could be used for something else that was on the list.
Every other bid could be closer to our estimate. GEG can have something in his business model that makes it so he can be much less. And it happens in bidding where some guys are hungrier than others or...
Okay, we're running low, over 10 minutes and we still have Select Board comments. I needed to open it up. Any Select Board comments at this time?
You know, I have a comment. My Select Board comment has to do with conducting our business in public and in the newspapers and I'm very concerned about that we've started to do that. And, you know, it's interesting that Dave Martell is here. A couple, a month or so ago, we had a meeting about open meeting laws and there was a question to our town attorney that says, "Is the open meeting law actually sacrosanct and what happens if a, you know, or executive session, I guess the question was, was, and what happens if somebody, you know, talks out of school about executive session and Dave Martell's comments, I thought were great and he said that, said that there's, you know, nothing to keep you from doing it, but I think it was the intent that, but it'd certainly be, seem to be violating what you were elected to do and how you were trying to run your business for the town. And I think the same thing goes for how we conduct business here. I think that when we conduct business at the Select Board level, I think we ought to conduct business at the Select Board level and, and yes, this is a five-person body and not everybody gets the vote to go the way they want to, but I think the sense is that it's, we've got five Select Board members to get the best overall sense of the, and leadership of the town and, you know, if you don't like what's going on, this is the place to do it as a Select Board member. I also clearly have a concern about doing public performance reviews and we'll probably talk about that a little bit more later in a more appropriate place, but we've got some, I think we should conduct our business in a, at our Select Board meetings and forward from there.
Anyone else?
I do. Yeah, first thing is, you know, I was up at the mobile station last week a few times and I saw four different police cars in there for some sort of service. And the question I have is, I was told years ago, we don't have, you know, we don't have maintenance bays and so forth for police. We now have two mechanics at DPW. The police is the only department that goes to the mobile station for repairs. DPW doesn't send their non-large equipment, they don't send the trucks the supervisors use. And my question is, they charge $86 per hour labor. And I like to know, what's the cost of doing business up there and why can't we do that in-house? Because I don't think we have any mechanic that's earning $86 including OPEB benefits, health insurance and so forth. And I'd just like to ask that the town manager look into that because I think that, since it's, if DPW were sending their vehicles up there, like their Crown Vics and the DPW director's car, the van and so forth, but we don't see any of those vehicles up there for service. So they're being handled within DPW and I don't know why our police cars aren't. And I know there's some things that go back to the dealer under warranty, but obviously this is stuff that's not being handled under warranty. Secondly, I just wanted to make a comment because, similar to Mark's, that, you know, policy review or personnel review in a newspaper, good or bad, I think is totally inappropriate. I think if you want to praise the town manager or criticize the town manager, we're here for four hours tonight, this is the venue to do it. I still don't think it's the venue to do it, but I think that if we are going to give personnel reviews, it's dangerously, it's dangerous to this board to have that conducted. And quite frankly, you know, Alex and Maria, you know, Alex, your article I thought was just, was just inappropriate and Marie's, I think yours was just as inappropriate as well because you did the counter to that, which I think, and I understand why, but I just don't think that those are really appropriate for, especially when you're getting down to specific issues as to what you like or don't like that the town manager is doing. I think you gave a formal written report that can be used against us at any point in time, one way or the other. I think it's totally inappropriate. As a Select Board member, if you want to go out there and give your opinion on things, God bless you, but when it comes to the only employee that we manage that is under our supervision, that has to be done in-house in executive session or if it's an open session, issue an open session. I just think it's inappropriate to be writing articles, good or bad, about the town manager from the board's perspective. You know, I, again, Stephen, I've gone at Stephen during meetings, I think some of us have too, and that's okay, we can disagree on things and it's okay to kind of yell at each other at times, but, well, we've done it in the past and I don't, and what I mean by that is, this is a format to display your opinion that you disagree with the town manager on something or agree with the town manager on something, but to put it in print and to have the public, you know, air our dirty laundry and public, it's not even dirty laundry, I shouldn't say that, because I don't, I don't think it is. And I just think it was, it's irresponsible to put those words on paper for the public to see when it becomes a managerial perspective. And quite frankly, I think that the town manager deserves better than that. I believe that, you know, we owe it to the town to make sure that we're doing what we're legally obliged to do. Opinions are one thing, but when you go beyond the legal aspects of it, I have a, I have a concern about that. And personally, I just think the board should, I don't think we should have a policy, I think we should have an understanding as elected officials that you just don't do that. It's just, it's bad business, it's bad all around and neither one of, neither one of those articles are going to pass the smeltest if there was something that ever came down the road that we had to do regarding the town manager. And I just, again, you want to beat them up at a meeting, beat them up at a meeting. We're here, it's stuff that you can talk about in public that, you know, but to give a personnel review, I think it's inappropriate and I hope it just doesn't happen again.
Well, I was looking tonight for a Select Board policy, a motion that we don't discuss any employee performance, good or bad, in the press. And I'm not sure if I have a motion to that effect.
Well, I'm not sure you can have a motion. I think it falls under what called a Dave Martell rule of common sense, which is that it shouldn't be a motion. But I think people should recognize that for a variety of reasons, you know, performance reviews belong, the performance review.
Well, I'd like to comment, since there's Mark and Paul, you've expressed disapproval of something that I've written. I disagree with the approach that you described of sort of keeping things in-house, not involving members of the public. The things that I discussed in my column were really nothing different than had been discussed either by me, were other people in public meetings. I fail to grasp the difference between you, Paul, telling the town manager that something that he did was completely inappropriate at a Select Board meeting, or somebody else, and then saying the same thing in print. I think it's actually important for the public to understand what it is we're doing here. That's what I campaigned on. I think it's important that the public be part of the discussion. When I discussed in my column a disagreement with an approach, that was an important public policy issue, I think what was discussed was the very essence of politics. In fact, I think any policy that sought to inhibit a Select Board member, an elected politician, which is what we are, from discussing important matters of public policy would be completely incompatible with the First Amendment, and parenthetically, would be unwise public policy to boot. So, you know, I understand your opinion, and I disagree with it.
Well, the concern I have is not policy discussion. Policy discussion, I feel, is important, and it should be out in the public. When you discuss employee performance specifically, I feel that in some ways, it's almost a form of bullying, because that employee cannot respond. And as an executive board and someone who supervises employees, whether it's a direct supervision or any employees, I feel that putting it in print required me to respond. And as Paul said, I did not feel comfortable doing that response either. Because any comments about employees' good or bad performance, it does not belong in the press. That's not where, it needs to belong only here and in executive session. Because there's no way that person can respond in the press and in the same manner and form. So I believe it's important for us to discuss policy. It's important for us to discuss our approach, even, to casino mitigation. But I think that's why I'm asking for a policy. I think it's important we do not discuss specific employees, whether it's the town manager or people in DPW that were doing something specifically and can be identified. So that's why I felt very strongly and did respond. But, and I was asking for us to have a policy, not that we don't discuss things in print, but that we don't discuss employee performances. But I guess I don't...
I'd just like to say one more thing. And Alex, you have every right to express your opinion. You have done, you will do, and I understand that. You said the key word, it's politics. And that's right. Once between us, it might be politics. The town manager is not involved in politics. He is not a political official. He did not get elected, he got appointed. He is an employee. He's an employee of the town, but more importantly, he's an employee of this board. He serves at our will. When we decide to hire or fire a town manager, it's the board that votes, not the town. He doesn't have an election. So that's where it crosses the line. When you start, when you go after the rest of the board, have at it. We can write letters to the editor too and have fun with it. But that's where it's different. It's not political with the town manager. It's a personnel issue.
So I think we should...
Well, I'd just like to say, I fail to grasp the difference between something that's said here and saying the same thing where more people can read it. I mean, for example, one could take a clip of this meeting, edit the very thing that you've said about performance, and then post it on a blog, and that would be journalism. And I fail to see the difference between that and writing it in some other form.
Well, the difference is the personnel policies that the state requires and allows us to do. I think that, because it involves issues that we can't discuss openly, I'll discuss it with you in closed session. But we've had issues in the past that need to be, that I think Paul and I are particularly aware of, that need to be understood. That there are personnel regulations that we must obey. It's that simple. And so the issue of personnel is very different from one another. Beat me up, you know, beat up the policies and beat up the town. But when it comes to people and their performance, we have to be very, very cautious and very, very aware that people have rights under the state regulations of personnel regulations. And should these people be, feel offended, or feel put upon, they can't avail themselves of those rights, and the town's going to find themselves in deep water. And that's not something that I would like to have happen. It's that, it's that simple. And I'm not going to go into more detail now, but I'm certainly glad to.
Well, since there doesn't seem to be a consensus to have a policy to that, I think we've...
Okay, I know this is Select Board comments, but I feel like this is, I feel like I'm a part of this issue. Could I make a comment?
Do you want to?
You're just going to dig the hole deeper.
Yeah.
Deeper than what?
Before he digs himself deeper, you notice that I've been very quiet on this issue, because I happened to have been out of the country when this issue took place. But I definitely do have opinions on this issue. And I sincerely agree with Mr. Gold and Mr. Santinello, that there are far-reaching elements that may not be apparent when this stuff is done. It can have consequences that you can't perceive until they slap you in the face. And it deals with personnel management. There are some definite no's and definite goods, and this, that, and the other. And generally, it is a very poor practice for any supervisory official to be making public statements about an employee in any public format. We can have debates in here, but we are not making attacks of individuals. And I would encourage everybody to stay away from that too, because it can have consequences that we, you can't imagine. So that is my opinion, although I was not part of this. Now you can dig your hole deeper.
Or we could break to executive session.
I guess I would just add that, because you were saying you don't understand the difference. To me, the difference would be something like, if I could use an analogy, you work for the US Attorney, right?
Is this your comment?
No, I'm clarifying to make sure...
Or you're cross-examining.
I'm just making sure I have my facts straight before I use my analogy. You work for the US Attorney?
I'd rather...
So imagine you're, it's a pretty simple question, but imagine you're prepping for a trial, okay? And the US Attorney, your boss, writes a letter to the Springfield Public saying, "We're prepping for this trial, and I think we're going to lose, because my attorney on this case doesn't know what he's doing and won't listen to me." As a person, as a human being, I mean, as a person and an employee, how would that make you feel? And further, how do you think the people on the other side of the trial would feel about that?
Okay. And why don't we, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of proven executive session minutes, for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining, and for the purpose of discussing personnel issues.
Second.
All those in favor?
Now we have to have a roll call.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 We will now move into executive session. Thank you for joining us.